Welcome. This is a special meeting for Wednesday, February fifteenth of the Town and Cordeola Madera Planning Commission. So please call the room.
Commissioner Kenny? Commissioner Bundy?
Here.
Chair Chase?
Here.
Vice Chair Rizzo?
Here.
Commissioner Bandell?
One way under God, individual delivery and justice.
Thank you. So now we come to a special moment in the planning commission. This is a moment that I've been dreading. But I get to say great things about this man to my right, Dr. Bob Bundy, and so does everybody else. So he's been a particular joy to work with, but we'll start with Phil to present this resolution, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Chase and members of the planning commission. Thank you, Bob. This is an official reading into the record of Resolution Number twenty-three zero zero six, which is a resolution of the Cordeola Madera Planning Commission expressing appreciation to Dr. Robert Bundy for his outstanding service to the town of Cordeola Madera as a member of the planning commission. Whereas Bob Bundy served with distinct with distinction on the Cordeola Madera Planning Commission for almost seven years from April two thousand sixteen to February two thousand twenty-three. And whereas Bob agreed to stay on the planning commission for an additional six months after the passing of the beloved Phyllis Metcalf. Whereas Bob generously contributed his valuable expertise and knowledge regarding projects that were within the floodplain of the town and as a member of the Cordeola Madera Flood Control Board since two thousand and five, brought essential information into planning commission deliberations with the goal of avoiding loss of life, property and property due to flooding and sea level rise. And now I'll hand it over to Commissioner Rizzo.
Whereas Bob thoughtfully considered all aspects of every project heard before the commission, listening attentively to the opinions of all the applicants and residents so that all parties received a fair, open-minded, respectful hearing. And whereas Bob often advocated for the preservation of common, common eucalyptus, Tanzanian blue gum tree, especially when large stands, large stands of this non-native evasive and fire-prone tree was to be removed by development applications. His advocacy for this tree was not always shared by his fellow commissioners or fire department. And Bob thought and Bob did not always prevail, accepted the majority opinion and moved on. And whereas Bob was a strong advocate for the undergrounding of utilities and removal of many PG&E power poles as possible with the goal of beautifying the town of Port of Madera and.
Dan. Whereas, as an avid kayaker, cyclist and lover of nature and antique automobiles, he fully embraced both the natural world and the built environment and brought his many perspectives to each planning commission decision. And whereas Bob brought his calm, attentive demeanor and pragmatic approach to all planning commission proceedings and consistently advocated for projects that will have a lasting positive impact on the community. And whereas Bob's problem-solving skills were honed in the emergency room and contributed to his exceptional ability to resolve conflicts and disputes often before the commission and.
Whereas now that Bob has Tuesday evenings free, he has time to consider the perfect marriage proposal in consultation with his friend Peter Chase to his perfect wife Linda of fifty-plus years. And whereas planning staff encourages Bob to pass the planning commissioner torch to Linda Bundy as her services as a planning commissioner would be welcomed by staff and the commission alike. And whereas Bob has always brought his delightful personality, congeniality, mutual respect and consideration of others' viewpoints to all planning commission meetings and.
Now therefore be resolved that the planning commission of the Town and Cordeola Madera hereby expresses its deep gratitude for Dr. Bob Bundy's contribution and leadership as a member of the planning commission. And be it further resolved that the planning commission wishes Bob and his wife Linda the best of luck and happiness in their future endeavors. Before we pass it, by we'll do a roll call vote on this, right?
We do have a public comment before you vote.
And I would like to enter that and get that entered into the record and ask for commentary from the room. So Tracy.
Thanks, Chair Chase. We can start with the comment that was received by email. It's on the dice for you. It comes from Suzy Beatty. To Bob and all, I'm sorry I can't be there tonight to personally say thank you and congratulations to a wonderful human, Dr. Bob Bundy. Thank you so much, Bob, for your many years of outstanding service on the planning commission and for all that you do for the people of Cordeola Madera. Your volunteerism in our community is beyond amazing. You've always had Cordeola Madera's well-being uppermost in your mind and you get things done. You have creative ideas and listen to others and care for our town and its residents like no other. Your departure from the planning commission is likely bittersweet, possibly allowing you a tad more personal time, though I hope we will be seen just as often as usual. Thanks, Bob, and big kudos and congratulations on this retirement. Suzy Beatty.
Okay, well, that said, is there public comment on this item before us? Sir, Mr. Dave? You'll have to switch it on there probably, yeah.
Dave Johnson, ninety-four Golden Hind Passage in Cordeola Madera. I would strongly encourage that you all vote yes on this right resolution. You know, Bob Bundy has really taken this so seriously. And as he does with so many different things that he does in the town. And it's his love of the town that that really comes out in this work and all the other work he does. He does. And he's going to find another way to embed himself in the in the town in so many different ways. So congratulations, Bob, and I hope y'all vote for this.
Thank you, Dave. Anyone else? No. Okay.
There's one hand raised via Zoom.
Okay, let's have it.
We have David Bell. Go ahead and unmute yourself when you're ready.
Just want to say thumbs up to Mr. Bundy and appreciation for service and congratulations. Hope to see you soon.
That's great. Thank you, Dave. All right, so you know, unless there are any objections to this, I have an objection. You're leaving. So but notwithstanding, so let's take a roll call of our appreciation of Dr. Bob Bundy.
Oh, and that will just appreciate not leaving.
Commissioner Kenny?
Aye.
Chair Chase?
Aye.
Vice Chair Rizzo?
Aye.
Commissioner Bandell?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Well, thank you all. That was a very personal resolution. I've listened to a lot of these over the years and this was incredibly personal and I really appreciated. From the time Carla Condon twisted my arm to get on the planning commission, following all the controversy over Tam Ridge, I wasn't sure what I was getting onto, but with the help of Peter and other commissioners, I sort of learned my way. All our attorneys have sort of kept me in line and kept me from getting in trouble. I've particularly appreciated my informal mentoring staff such as Dave Johnson and others on our Sunday Bike Ride where some of these things would get discussed. But I especially want to thank the planning department that has just been exceptional. It hasn't made the job easy, but the packets that are put together, the detailed information made me very comfortable looking at all aspects of it and arriving at a decision that I was comfortable with. So I thank you for that, and I would encourage other Cordeola Madera citizens to step up for planning commission and other commissions when there are vacancies. Thank you. I appreciate it very much.
Well said. Thank you. It's absolutely true. If it weren't for staff, we'd be in a world of hurt. Thank you, guys. Um, okay.
Okay.
I'll see you Sunday.
Eight o'clock.
All right, so at this time in every meeting, we open the meeting to public comment for that which is not on the agenda tonight. So if there is something that someone wants to say that we're not going to talk about, please step up to the microphone. Do we have any hands up for this?
No hands raised.
Okay. We'll close the public comment section. I've seen that we have nothing on the consent calendar nor continued hearings. We'll get right to our first item tonight. And I put it somewhere. But I know what it is. So you guys are going to post a order of proceeding here tonight for this appeal application, PL twenty-three zero 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 seven, requesting modification of the zoning administrator's approval of design review application, PL twenty-two dash zero zero one nine at twenty-six channel drive. All right, so it's time for a review of the process here. Do you want to post that up here? So everybody can see what we're going to do. All right, thank you. So staff will introduce this, will disclose our ex parte communications. Then we'll have a public portion of this, which is a presentation by the appellant, presentation by the applicant, questions, public comment, rebuttals, final questions, and then we'll close the public hearing and debate this at the dius level. So that's reduced instead of reading every sentence here. That's essentially what we're going to do. So with that said, I think that I would like to ask everybody if they've been to the site for this project. Daniel?
Yes.
Okay, Bob?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Rizzo?
Yes. Margaret?
Yes.
Okay, and I've been by the house two times over there to look at it from the street. So with that said, we have a staff report for this to begin the proceeding.
Thank you, Chair Chase and Vice Chair Rizzo and commissioners. As you said, this evening, the commission is considering an appeal of the January sixth, two thousand twenty-three zoning administrator's approval of residential additions at twenty-six channel drive. The project site is twenty-six channel drive. That's the green icon on the screen here. It's a flat seven thousand nine hundred and eighty square foot lot developed with a single-story home. It's located in Marina Village subdivision and is situated at the end of Channel Drive with undeveloped open space in the north. To the south, the blue icon is twenty-two channel drive, also a single story. This is the appellant's residence. And across San Clemente Creek to the east, about one hundred and eighty feet away, our homes in Mariner Cove on Golden Hind Passage. On January sixth, two thousand twenty-three, the zoning administrator approved designer view application, PL twenty-two zero zero one nine for six hundred and ninety-five square feet of single-story additions and a complete remodel of the home, including raising the finished floor of the home above base flooded elevation. And on January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, the owner of twenty-two channel drive next door to the south of the project site appealed the zoning administrator's decision and requested specifically modification of the south elevation to exclude two proposed bathroom windows. The appeal application, application and a statement from the appellant are included in your staff port as attachment four. The single-story additions consist of consist of a two hundred and thirty-three square foot addition to the kitchen and dining room of, excuse me, living room of the home at the northeast corner. The existing site plan is on the left, proposed is on the right. The additions are the dark gray shaded boxes at the rear elevation. The additions also include a three hundred and ninety-seven square foot addition to the southeast corner of the home for two bedrooms and a sixty-five square foot addition to the front entry on the west elevation of the home. There's an existing six hundred square foot deck at the rear yard that will be removed and replaced with an uncovered seven hundred and eleven square foot deck. The deck ranges in height from two feet, five inches to two feet, eleven inches in height. The project includes a complete remodel of the home. The existing pitched roof, roofs of the home will be replaced with flat roofs. And as I stated before, with this project, the residents will be raised two feet, six inches to bring the finished floor one foot above base flood elevation in accord with FEMA and Cordeola Madera standards. The project meets all the zoning development standards and not for the R-one zone, including height, lock coverage, floor area setbacks and parking. There's a discussion of zoning conformance and the design review analysis included in a zoning administrator's approval letter and of course in the resolution and staff report, the zoning administrator's approval letter was attachment to the staff report. Prior to submitting their application for design review and throughout the design review process, the applicant and the neighbor at twenty-two channel drive worked together to resolve some concerns that were raised by the property owner at twenty-two channel. And there was a variety of changes, modifications and additions that were made as a result of those conversations. And those are included on page five of attachment one, a kind of a listing of some of those those changes in an attempt to find common ground. I'm quickly going to go through some of the elevations that we probably not going to talk about tonight, and then we'll pause on the south elevation. This is the existing and proposed front or west elevation facing Channel Drive. This is existing and proposed rear elevation facing San Clemente Creek. And existing and proposed north elevation, this faces the open space to the north of the parcel. And this is the existing and proposed south elevation. You can see the drop in height that was made by the applicant for the portion of the addition nearest the shared property line. You can also see the two windows that are subject of the appeal shown here on this elevation. There is again. The two bathroom windows are indicated with the red arrow. Obviously, each bathroom window is four feet in width and two feet in height. The sill height of both windows is five feet. And the applicant proposes to frost both of these windows. They're utilizing some common techniques that are used to resolve privacy concerns such as frosting the windows. The other thing that they're doing is adding the private hedge on the shared property line. It has a venture height of eight to fourteen feet. If you refer to attachment three, those are the drawings, it sheets, a sheet A one point one shows the planting plan. And she a three point three shows the south elevation and calls out the frosted glass and the hedge. To assist the commission in their evaluation of the two proposed bathroom windows, the applicant applied black tape to the existing building to illustrate the location of the proposed bathroom windows, their height and the size of them. And on February seventh, staff took several photographs from the interior and exterior of the appellant's property. Those are attachment eight to your staff report. I'll show them on the screen here, too. Photos were taken from the family room, dining room and the deck area of the appellant's property at twenty-two channel drive. The first set of photos here were taken from the family room. This is the family room of the appellant's home. This photo is taken seated at the family room couch, looking north to the project site. You can see the story polls showing the area of addition in red and the black tape illustrating the proposed bathroom windows on the south facade. This is seated on the right edge of the same family room couch, again, looking north. This is a picture taken one pace from the picture window at the family room. And this one is three paces. Three paces from the sliding door. Same room. And this is three paces from the picture window that's next to the sliding door. Second set of photos that were taken were taken from the dining room of the appellant's home. This is the dining room. This is a photo taken looking towards the applicant's property. You can see the red edge of the story poles there. This is taken seated at the appellant's dining room table. This is standing one pace from the sliding door at the dining room, looking at the project site next door. And this is standing in the same location from the dining room sliding door, looking east to the view of San Clemente Creek. This is three paces from the same dining room door, again, looking north to the project site. This is the last set of photos that were taken. These are taken from the rear yard deck just off the dining room and family room of the appellant's property at twenty-two channel drive. This is the deck. This photo is taken seated at the outdoor table, looking north to the project site. This is also seated at the outdoor table, looking towards the project site, but looking slightly northeast towards the area of addition. This is standing at the outdoor table on the rear yard deck. This is also taken standing in the same position, but looking east San Clemente Creek. And this is a panoramic photo, standing on the rear yard deck, looking left to the project site all the way right back towards twenty-two channel drive. The commission's decision tonight regarding whether to uphold or deny the appeal rests on whether the commission feels it can make the findings required for a design review. The appeal states that there's the potential for light and noise from the proposed bathroom windows in conflict with very contrary to what needs to be found for finding three. This is the use sunlight privacy finding. Staff believes that it's unlikely that the bathroom windows would have a significant or adverse effect on the privacy enjoyed by the appellant. Analysis of those findings is included in the zoning administrator's approval letter. That's attachment two, as well as in the draft resolution. That's attachment one. Staff is recommending that the planning commission consider the points of the appeal and make a determination based on the options shown in the staff report and here on the slide. Staff as me, I have prepared a draft resolution denying the appeal, but this is done just to expedite the process if that is the decision that the commission chooses to make. The commission could also decide to approve the appeal. And the commission also could decide to modify the zoning administrator's action in some other way. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Obviously, the project architect and property owner here as well as the appellant. And again, Peter, the I'll leave this up. And this housekeeping slide again, it's the order of proceedings.
Right. Thank you. Tracy. So at this point, we will, as a commission, ask questions of staff and see what we have to find out from staff for ourselves after the commissioners have reviewed these documents and so forth. So we'll start here with the honorable Dr. Bundy.
Tracy, I just wanted to confirm that the windows that are shown is the height that they would be in the project.
Yes, after raising the structure.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Daniels?
They are not shown as operable on the drawings. If that's not correct, I'd like the applicant to confirm that.
Will be offer.
They will.
And what's the distance between the windows at the elevation?
That is shown on sheet A one point zero, seven feet, two inches from the side property line. Six feet is required.
And what were your considerations in defining that it did not affect privacy?
A number of things. First, that the applicant is mitigating for privacy concerns by frosting the windows and installing a private hedge, both common techniques to resolve privacy concerns for larger and higher windows on many other projects. And the other reason that staff feels that there is not a significant adverse effect as a result of these windows is the fact that they are bathroom windows. They're not an actively used room like a bedroom, living room or family room.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that regard, I'll just interject here. What is the sill height of the windows in the room?
Five feet.
Five feet. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rizzo.
I just have a general question. Why wasn't this brought to a planning commission? It looks like a tear down to me.
Thank you. Our threshold for a design review is based primarily on the size and height of additions. And we have by policy reasons why certain projects would come before the commission. Those reasons are when the area of additions is equal to or greater than fifty percent of the gross floor area of the structure before the addition requires planning commission hearing. If the addition is a new second story or higher, it requires a planning commission public hearing. We don't have a threshold for design review that addresses when a structure is demolished and rebuilt.
Okay, so we just considered it an addition even though if it's all coming down. Because if you found eight, they got to, I mean, I'm looking at this going, they did a whole new roof line. All the walls are coming down. Okay. So a single story is considered an addition less than fifty percent. And that's the reason it it just went to a staff level.
Correct. They they their gross floor area before the addition, not including the garage, is seventeen hundred and ninety-four square feet, including the garage is two thousand one hundred and ninety-four square feet. So to they would have to add fifty percent of that amount to automatically go to the commission and certainly staff when there's a significant public controversy or policy questions, we'll take applications to the commission for those reasons as well.
Okay. I don't have any further questions. Thank you.
All right, Margaret Bandell?
So this is a somewhat procedural. Are we limited to just the issue that the appellant has brought up?
No, not necessarily.
Excuse me?
No.
No.
So what, may I ask, then, we're considering other aspects of it or just the windows? No?
No, in the consideration of the appeal, you're not limited to just the one finding, for example, but.
Oh, the one finding?
Yeah.
But that's our issue is just the windows.
That's the appeal. The appeal is based on that. That's correct.
But we're not.
So you're not reviewing the entire project for design review.
We're not.
No, you're considering the appeal and the basis for the appeal and and you can jump in as well if you want, but the appeal is and making the findings based on the scope of the appeal that's been made before.
So we are limited. That's what you're saying.
Well, I guess I was thinking of it in terms of what finding you're actually looking at. You for the basis of the appeal, you're looking at all the findings. The one that seems most relevant here is finding number three related to privacy and impact, but you could, for example, if the landscaping, if you thought that was related to the privacy in some way, there's multiple findings that address landscaping. I think what's the other landscaping finding? I think there's five, number five or six.
So if you're asking, can we consider the height or the appearance of, no, it's not before us unless it affects this issue, right?
Oh, I see.
Yeah. So with that said.
Do I have another question? Yes, okay. Wasn't the wasn't twenty-six channel drive? Wasn't twenty six channel drive one of the houses that was carrying on short term rentals?
That's my understanding. It was a significant amount of months ago that it came up. I talked to our code enforcement manager today about it. And at the time of the complaint, the property owner was asked to discontinue short term rentals. And that's complied with. As far as we know, there hasn't been another complaint about this property or about short term rentals in many months.
I don't have anything.
All right.
All right, actually I do.
Okay.
One more thing. Sorry. How long does it take for a privilege hedge to grow and how do you know how rapidly it will grow?
I I don't.
Okay, I've looked it up.
Okay, good. It always count on you, Peter.
Yeah, it's considered fast growing. By either Wikipedia or Monrovia Nursery, they grow three to four feet a year.
Got one.
Right, so that's that's the best data to date right now. And they both both those sources call them out as ten to fifteen feet as height. But there aren't for this particular variety.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I I just wanted to say that I did look up Airbnb and it's still on Airbnb is available, so.
Thank you.
Oh, it's still advertised.
We can ask later.
We can ask later. That's not part of this discussion.
Right.
As you know, we don't allow short term rentals. And so if anything comes to our attention, we notify the property owner that it's not currently allowed.
Weren't we gonna get a program that scanned that thing?
And which things?
Short short term rentals. Wasn't that part of the presentation that the consultant gave?
Yeah.
It it was discussed at a public meeting.
Oh, but we didn't buy it.
I don't think we've moved forward with the short term rental ordinance right now. But I think it's still.
Okay, we can ask the staff about that down the road here. So we and we will find out what the story is there. Dan asked my question about the windows since they're shown is not operable, but they are operable according to the architect. The existing fence height looks like it's about eight feet with the six foot. Solid portion and the trellis portion of two feet above that.
Yeah, I think there's portions that are less than eight.
Right, okay. And there's we'll ask the architect about the size of these private hedges that they've shown. That will be a question for them. So before we get a presentation from folks, anybody else have? Final chance of questions for staff?
No, okay.
I've got, I do have one. And maybe Anne could answer this during commentary, but I'm curious what the code reads for dark sky. Compliance for fixtures that we're worried about glare going on people's property, whereas in, I believe, the. Kind of concern here is more about the glare from the windows and than it is about. The actual privacy. I I'm just curious.
Right.
I can look that up while you're talking.
We do have a standard condition of approval related to exterior lighting, but not interior interior lighting or or lanterning effects.
There's nothing there for that. Right, right, okay. All right, so thank you. At this time, we will ask for a presentation by the appellant. So you guys, if you would, please step up to the microphone and make your case. You have ten minutes.
There'll be two of us. Yeah, can you hear? There'll be two of us speaking. So my name's Todd Whitaker. I live at twenty two channel and I'm the neighbor of twenty six channel. So I want to thank the commissioners for taking your time to listen to our appeal. So we've reached an impasse with the neighbors regarding the windows that are in question. We want them removed and the neighbors want them to remain. So I'm going to give you a little history about our house. The first time we ever saw our house out. Was during an open house about twenty five years ago. And we walked in, we had no idea there was water in the back. So in that it connected to the bay. And we were amazed at the views, the expansive views that went from San Clemente Creek. All the way up to San Francisco Bay, Richmond Bridge, all the way to Vallejo, fantastic view. Our neighbors had these very mature palm trees that. Held dozens of different species of birds. The site just had this great feeling of openness and. So it was just, it was just lovely. So the other thing that really appealed to us was this was the sense of privacy in the backyard. So the our primary living spaces are our kitchen, family room and deck. And the neighbor's house had a blank wall, basically. We had a fence in between, but there was, we had total visual privacy. There was no light source. There was no noise source. And we were able to enjoy that for, have been able to enjoy that for twenty five years. And it's it's meant a lot to us to have all the privacy. So sometime in the late fall of twenty twenty one, we were notified by the then new homeowner that they were proposing. And a major remodel to the house. So the remodel included an addition that stuck out about sixteen feet toward the rear. And raised the raised the roof level and which impacted our view quite a bit. They had proposed taking down or removing all of the palm trees that were that were in the backyard. And the other thing was they had proposed to put in the two bathroom windows that faced our face our deck and our family room. And so over the course of a year, during a couple of design iterations, we. Were collaboratively collaboratively with the with the applicant and their architect. And we resolved many issues. And we came to a point where we agreed on almost everything and. I will say that we kind of, it was a reluctant agree agreement because we still. We still find that the that the addition is blocking. You know, good portion or a good chunk of our view. So but that's that's sort of for this hearing, neither here nor there. However. We never reached a consensus on the windows. And as so we we explored different options. We we talked about hedges. We talked about. Maybe putting some sort of a shield in front of the windows. We talked about skylights. And so we we just, we couldn't come to an agreement. So. And I have also, there have, there were about probably three iterations of design that I reviewed. As they as they as the process developed and. I've got what I want to read. So the the windows have always been a. Obviously been been the thing for us, the from a privacy aspect. So I'm going to read you three emails that I wrote during during the design review time. So. The first one I wrote on November third, this is back in twenty twenty one. This is the first time that we received, these these were the initial design drawings. So. Here we go. The the two proposed bathroom windows with five foot sills are directly in line with our deck and our family room. We don't want to see or hear anyone taking a shower, et cetera. I suggest skylights. So we subsequently had a meeting and there was a, there were some modifications done to the length of the addition and and the height. Or sorry, not the height yet, just just the length of the addition. The windows are still there. So March seventh, twenty twenty two, the location and size of the proposed bathroom windows, in spite of frosting, are still objectionable as they are nearly centered on our deck. So fast forward then to August twenty ninth. This is the final design package that went in for for approval. However, the bathroom windows are still both directly in line with our family room. We strongly object to them. This is our private area and we that we have enjoyed since we moved here. Our deck is private and is light free and noise free. We want to keep it that way. The proposed hedge is beneficial insofar as it breaks up the mass of the wall. But we don't count on it to eliminate the light from the windows and mitigate the noise. We don't want to feel that we need to close our blinds and our windows for privacy. So I'm gonna, I want to. Address a question that I expect to come. So. If the commissioners were to ask me point blank if a hedge would satisfy my privacy, privacy issues, I would say a strong no. That that that's not acceptable. The windows would still be there looming over the deck. The light source is still there. The noise source is still there and it's a violation of our privacy. So I want to say a word about skylights too, which is, it was discussed. It's, I think it's a. Great alternative for for windows to help us with our privacy. So a word about skylights. I think skylights are great. They provide great light and great ventilation. In fact, there might even be more light coming in the skylights than the frosted windows. And I might add that the skylights are not new to this project. In fact, there are. Six skylights proposed already on the roof and two of them are in the master bedroom. Or master bathroom. So what does this all come down to for us? To me, it comes down to the value of privacy. We've enjoyed our privacy for over twenty five years. And it's unacceptable to us to settle for less privacy than we currently have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And he would like to speak, yes.
Hello, my name is Kitty Whitaker. I'm married to Todd. And I wanted to say just a couple of things about neighborhoods. I'd like to introduce myself professionally. I'm a registered nurse. By training and for twenty seven years I've lived and worked in this county and in Cortumadera. I have worked at hospice by the bay for twenty seven years as a hospice nurse. And so I know neighborhoods really, really well. I also serve currently for nine years as the CEO of that organization. We have a great respect for neighborhoods. And I'd like to share with you, and in all the years, ten years of me going in and out of neighborhoods. I have seen impossible things happen for people. When neighbors come together and they respect the neighborhoods that they live in. I've seen ninety five year old men and women who have lived in a home for seventy five years say. I only want to stay in my home. I want peace, quiet and privacy. I've seen neighbors come out in neighborhoods and make that happen. I have such a strong respect for that personally and professionally. And I bring that to where we are today. We are at an impasse where we think our privacy is being compromised. And it's unacceptable to us. We've lived in this home for twenty five years. This gentleman here, he seems like a very nice young man. We don't know him very well. He has not lived in this house. It has been put up as an Airbnb. But we've lived there for twenty five years and we've enjoyed our privacy there. And it will be compromised because there will be a light source and there will be a noise source. We entertain in this area. These houses were built so that we could appreciate the abundance of wildlife, the beautiful sky. Everyone who lives in that neighborhood knows they've got privacy in the areas where they all live. And I think that we can compromise here. I want to thank you very much for letting me take time. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. So now, that took us down to forty three seconds on the ten minute clock. So thank you. Now it's time for the applicant to speak for ten minutes.
Good evening. I'm Kenneth Holder. I'm the project architect. I'm going to keep my presentation very short. Because I think Anton has been intimately involved in this at every step and would like a few moments to address. The time he's put into it. What I would like to make the point about. When Anton and his family purchased this property, I actually really appreciated the sensitivity they showed. They understood the. Sensitivity of the the natural environment. This is a very unique property to be surrounded on all side by by the estuary. But they also, I feel like there was real attention given to the concern about the neighbors, all the surrounding neighbors. And one of the things we discussed early on is to stay at a one story house. And that was in some ways held Todd to how much Anton, how much space he was going to be allowed in this house. He, but it was a conscious step. To find a house that would be amenable to the entire neighborhood. Especially folks across the water, a second story house would have been, I think, a pretty, a pretty tough intrusion on their view of the mountain. We really did not ever anticipate that these windows. That are in a sense kind of a necessity. I think it's an absolute thing to be able to expect that a whole bathroom would have at least a window that a. Any average sized person could operate. It wouldn't have to be handled with, you know, crankpoles and electronics. That it there's a handle or a pushout, a an ability to get natural ventilation in a bathroom. I think it's just a. It's an unfortunate reality and I think it's something that the FEMA. Requirement to lift all these homes, I think we're going to see much more of these kind of weird circumstances where a hall. Bathroom window, which is a standard and probably. Probably most every home in the in the neighborhood has them. It's going to come up. So in this case, I agree. I it will certainly, when you look at those photos straight on, the windows look really objectionable. It looks like that's the entire perimeter, but seen in context, that last photo that showed the entire setting. I think, well, if you've been to the site, you know, it's a small aspect of what's going on out there. So the last, really, just to leave time for Anton, the the main point I wanted to say. I understand any new project is going to have, I mean, findings are a highly subjective. It's a very difficult thing to create a rock solid finding. Is it undue? Effect on someone's privacy? Any new project is going to have some effect. Unfortunately, in this case, I I don't know how to, I don't think it's a good idea to do a a kid's hall bathroom without a window. I just don't. That one I don't get. I've never done that before. But I I do believe in skylights. I think that. It's a good idea, but to have to do an electronically operated skylight so that a kid could get ventilation in their bathroom or get natural ventilation, I think is. I think that's undue. So I'd I'd really like for there to be strong consideration about what this private hedge. Yes, it grows three to four feet per year. The specimens that are specified. Should come in at around six feet, put in the ground the first day. Yes, it'll be an inconvenience for a year. And after that, if anything, the inconvenience is going to be maintaining those things is keeping them at a reasonable size. And then I think there should be a maintenance agreement about the size of the, you know, Anton can. Can certify that he'll keep them at a certain height and a certain thickness and modifications could be made, but I think if anything, there'll be. There's no way to eliminate sound privacy issues, but there is definitely visual eye to eye and light infiltration. I think that's an important consideration. The hedges will absolutely block it out. You will not be able to see these windows. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Good evening, commissioners. I like to start off my comments by, you know, just showing my appreciation for the process. I'm a first time homeowner. As the appellants mentioned, I haven't lived in the home because it's frankly close to unlivable. The sloping in the house is very. Very major and it's, you know, it's 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 not a comfortable place to be right now. Regarding the Airbnb comments that came up, yes, the home is on Airbnb. It has been rented for greater than thirty days since we've gotten. The since we've gotten complaints and we we aim to, you know, really minimize any sort of impact from from that, but not. Being able to live in the home until it's remodeled, you know, really, you know, puts me in a financial position where there needs to be some offsetting income. When I first purchased the property, you know, as the Whitakers mentioned, the view there, the natural environment there is really what is. The draw to that neighborhood and the whole entire design process was with that in mind. We wanted to maximize and and. And illustrate and and be able to live amongst the beauty that is there with San Clemente Creek, with the open, open preserve to the north. And we really, you know, we, as part of the design, we, you know, kept this the home as a single story with a flat roof to minimize impact to the neighbors across San Clemente Creek. We're plant, we're proposing to plant native vegetation to replace the date palms and the other palms that are not native and frankly are a hazard. The amount of fronds that fall from them, especially with this recent weather that we've had, there's a pile in the backyard right now. And those trees are, you know, they're close to falling over. Additionally, you know, we we really. build the house and really, you know, all hats off to Kenneth and his team. The house is beautiful and, and, you know, our hope and intent is that it will encourage further investment, further development in that neighborhood. There are some projects going on now. A lot of those houses are in similar condition to twenty six channel. And I really hope to see that neighborhood revitalized and more and more investment. Um, the intention is for me and my family to live in that house after it's remodeled, but not before. Um, also to address a comment from Commissioner Rizzo, uh, we are not intending to tear down the entire, the entire home. Uh, we're going to keep as much of the structural walls as we can uh, to minimize on the cost because construction costs have recently risen quite a bit. Additionally, uh, I'd like to say, you know, through the design process, we've worked uh, very closely with Todd and with other neighbors to try to minimize as much of the impact, address as many of the concerns as we possibly could. I feel that we did a very uh, adequate job in addressing most of the concerns. These windows are obviously the last thing that we uh, disagree about. Um, we've made concessions on several other, other aspects of the project, including roof height, the size of the addition, uh, the size of the deck, um, and uh, obviously the vegetation to, to increase the privacy. The bathroom windows in question are functionally and aesthetically necessary, in my opinion. If there are going to be older folks, my grandparents or my future children that are going to be in that house, I want there to be an operable window for ventilation, for light. And as Kenneth mentioned, having a skylight that's either electronically operated or manually operated through some sort of, you know, lever pulley system, it's it's, it's, it's a burden more than an inconvenience and, and it's really something that I, I believe is uh, is, is not the best solution from a structural design, from an architectural designer from the, for the livability of the home. The the uh, measures that we're taking to, to alleviate the privacy concerns of the private hedge of the frosting. We've also considered putting slats uh, in front of the windows. I don't believe that's shown on the plans right now, but it is an option to really, you know, not have it just frosted lit up window, but to have actual physical wooden slats offset, you know, a couple inches off, off the, off the structure. I'm more than willing to, to make those types of concessions to eliminate more privacy concerns. But from a functional and, and aesthetic perspective, I do feel like these two windows are necessary for the project to be successful. That's the uh, that's the end of my comments. I want to thank the commission and I want to thank the, the planning department for uh, making this process, you know, which was very daunting when I first bought the home. Um, you know, nat, uh, easier to navigate and I feel like I, I've learned a lot and uh, I look forward to, to hearing what the commission decides. Thank you.
Thank you, Anton. Um, so what we will do now is we will ask both of you, both parties questions and satisfy the commissioners to their uh, queries. Um, I'm going to sit over here with you, Daniel. Uh, do you have any questions for either of these parties?
I'm going to pass right now.
Okay, all right.
I'll come back.
All right.
Uh, yes, uh, Anton, uh, when I had talked to you, you had talked about having a very energy efficient, uh, a very energy efficient house, including uh, light control that would have the light go off when nobody was in the room. Is that in the plans at this point?
It's uh,
Oh, you have to step up to the microphone, please, Jim.
Uh, thank you for the question, question, Commissioner Bundy. So it, it's uh, as I understand, it's a requirement by code to, to build with uh, these types of uh, electrical energy efficiency um, devices. So we don't have the full structural or electrical or, or MEP plans at the moment, but yes, that will certainly be part of the plans and part of the construction.
Okay, and your proposal to put some slats on the outside of the windows. Uh, would that be sort of permanent or would that be until the private hedge uh, grew up and was sufficient to uh, create privacy?
I think, you know, when we discussed it, it would be a permanent, a permanent feature. Um, you know, some metal rails with just wooden slats and uh, you know, kind of leave that as is.
Okay, and the uh, the private hedge, uh, there's a private that's growing there now that's uh, mature. It's, I'm sure been stunted and, you know, there are a couple of dead trees that have to come out. Uh, but uh, has your arborist uh, looked at leaving those and then adding other private plants?
So we've only officially had an arborist evaluate the trees on the property, not the private hedge. But I, I, I do like that idea of leaving as much of the existing hedge to, to expedite the growth as we can, especially if, you know, we can uh, do, it takes some measures for that existing hedge to grow even higher than it is today.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Down to you, Jim.
Well, thank you. Um, Mr. Holder, you uh, you had mentioned that these bathrooms are are hallway bathrooms, uh, but they're en suites, correct?
They are, yes.
So that, oh, we, we have a powder room that, that's going to be used by guests, I would imagine, because we've got a
Yes.
And I mean, it seems like we had the, the master bathroom and, and the powder room are both utilizing skylights and why are these two bathrooms so important to have the windows opposed to the skylights?
Uh, due to the limitations of the floor plan, we really couldn't find a way to get, uh, yes, I would want a master bed bathroom to have an outside window. We just couldn't get it to work out. Uh, it was the, the single story residence was just too restrictive for it. So we had to make some choices. But, but yes, I would want any bathroom to have an high level window that you could operate.
Level window, okay. Thank you.
Um, Margaret, do you have any questions for your, these parties?
One question for um, Anton. Have you ever, um, I, I just, I'm trying to make, get it clear. Have you ever lived in your house?
When we first purchased it, I lived there for several months. It was, you know, in the very first year of the pandemic. So, you know, everything was slightly different and I did live there for several months. We made some minor improvements to the home in the interior, replacing some floors, light fixtures, painting. Um, and then, and then I, you know, had to go back to work in, in uh, the city and, and no longer lived in the property.
And um, you said that in, when you were, I don't know if this is, I'm going to ask it anyway. Um, you said that when you were planning the addition on the back of the house, did you consider what it would do to the view of the house next door?
We did after we drew the plans and we actually went over to the property at twenty two channel and we, you know, looked at the totality of the view, I believe. Um, uh, do you know which page that, I'm sorry, Kenneth, do you know which page the uh, the, the the site plan with the view is?
Yeah.
If we could, yeah, on, on page A one zero, I believe of the plans, we show basically the existing view with a square for where the addition will be. Currently, there are some trees slash hedges plus the, plus the large uh, date palm that are basically in the exact same location as the addition will be. So yes, the addition will be a different blocker of the view, but currently it's not an unrestricted view. So that was considered and, you know, the, the, the um, position, my, my position and, and our architect's position is that the new addition will replace what is currently obstructing the view.
So just so that I understand, you're saying that you're equating a building with a tree. Is that right?
I wouldn't say I'm equating. I'm saying that it will replace it.
Okay, and then I, I believe your architect or maybe you said that the tree was ready to fall down.
Uh, yes, I had made that directional comment that those palm trees are pretty old and pretty degraded.
But that isn't what your report said.
I believe the report states that with tidal uh, tidal waters, high wind and rain, that there is a risk of, a risk to the property.
Okay, this said the normal vitality and structural in integrity was part of the condition of the tree.
You're trying to establish um, the uh, uh, impact of the view or what you're uh,
Well, just, just the whole atmosphere that's going on there.
Okay.
Well, it doesn't matter. I have the report right here. That's okay.
It is in the, the staff's findings. It is uh, described in there what the arborist report stated and I know that there's a uh, risk to the structure. I, I don't remember the exact verbiage.
Under observations and tree schedule, there's three paragraphs there. The third paragraph reads, these street specific trees are planted approximately fifteen feet from a tidal stream with the combination of high tide rainfall and the enormous weight of these mature trees. There is a danger of their uprooting and causing property damage. We recommend removal of these trees.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Margaret?
Um, well, yeah, to uh, Mr. Whitaker. Todd. When you were um, going back and forth with um, Anton about the impact of this on your house. You said you did it um, that, that you agreed to those things with reservations. What were your reservations?
I said I was reluctant.
Reluctant, I'm sorry.
That's okay, because it's, because the, the addition does impact the view. Let's face it, it does. It's, it's sticking out an additional thirteen feet and it's about almost thirteen feet tall. So it more than replaces what's uh, what we're losing there.
Thank you.
Okay, is that?
Yes, that's it.
Okay, great. Um, I won't make any comment yet on this. Um, it's a tough thing. So um, the photos that staff took uh, show the addition in red, uh, right? Is that correct?
Yeah. Uh, correct.
Yeah. And eleven, twelve, thirteen. There is no uh, code right now that requires windows in bathrooms. There used to be a code for that, but it's no longer a code, right? If you have a fan.
My understanding that the um, humidistat controlled um, vent fan has to replace the required um, operable window in bathrooms.
Okay. So for the um, I, I think I want to hear from the appellant on a couple of things. They may address statements that were made. So with that said, um, no more questions for these guys. Uh, we'll be able to ask them again after they make their rebuttals here. But, okay, Dan.
Yeah, this is of the um, the uh, Anton, um, it's a majority, it's a finding of the majority of the board uh, is that um, the windows don't meet the privacy standards. Um, would you then have a bathroom with just a fan or would you then consider a skylight?
I would have to discuss with my architect, honestly, I we, we, we've discussed the skylights at length. We do not like that option for the reasons we stated. If we're um, required to remove the windows, we'll have to reevaluate.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So with that said, um, Tracy, do you have any public comment or anybody with a hand raised or anything?
Uh, nothing uh, via email, um, and no hands are raised, churches.
Okay. Um, since both parties are the only parties in the room here, there are no people willing to make a public comment other than yourself. So um, we'll close that public comment section and we'll go back to a rebuttal by the applicant and followed by a rebuttal by the appellant. And then we get to ask questions again. So uh, applicant, do you have anything else you want to say? No, we'll go to the applicant first, then you guys. So Anton, do you have anything else you want to say?
I do not.
Okay, all right, Todd.
Okay, one thing.
So one thing about the bathroom windows is that uh, there, there was a comment made that it's, it's going to be easier to operate a bathroom window than, than a like an electric skylight or a pole or something. So you should look at the plans and see where the bath, where these windows are located. One is located over a bathtub. So you're going to have to physically walk into the tub to operate the window. One is located in the shower. Same thing. You'll have to walk into the shower to operate the window. So that's my rebuttal.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Um, so that puts us in a position of asking any further questions of both you guys. Um, so um, and then uh, we will ask staff questions and then we'll close the, the public portion of this meeting. So do gentlemen and ladies have any other questions for either parties?
Yeah. No further questions.
Okay.
But uh, are the windows uh, going to be sliders? Or they uh, awning type windows or crank out?
Our uh, base assumption is there will be crank out windows.
Will that allow you to put uh, slats out there for priv, additional privacy?
That's a good point. Um, I mean, to be a hundred percent frank, I don't think we've designed uh, the specific type of window. So that part is uh, adjustable at the moment.
Okay. All right, um, do you have, do you have any further questions?
I do not.
All right, Margaret, do you have any further question?
I know.
Okay, so that said, I have one question and that is for um, this possible screen that goes outside of it. It would have to be spaced far enough off the building to allow for an awning to do that kind of thing. Um, so that would be at least six inches or so. Most awnings don't travel more than about six or eight inches when they push out. Anyway, so that's my statement about that. Um, uh, Mr. uh, Whitaker, do you guys, uh, have you considered this uh, slat proposition to these windows?
Was, the slats were one thing that was discussed when we were talking about possible alternatives. And uh, the last I heard was that they were going to, uh, the architect was going to go away and uh, take a look at it, but I didn't hear anything about it after that.
Okay, so that was a discussion that you were amenable to uh, for these windows or simply not?
Uh, I would say not.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right. All right, so um, anybody else have any questions for staff before we close this up and start talking about it up here? No. Okay, all right. So then we will uh, close all of this hearing portion that's public and a, a appellant and the applicant, and we'll bring it back up here to talk about. Um, I would expect that we might want to throw some thoughts on the table first and then go to around two of discussing it more precisely to a decision. But so I'm, I'm interested in what everybody has to say without necessarily saying, state your position out of the gate, because I think there are things to hear from each one of you. So um, Dan, I'd, I'd start with you.
Uh, yeah, um, uh, for a number of reasons, I, I, uh, I don't think the windows meet the threshold for, for uh, privacy. Um, one is the distance between the house, the two houses, which is seven feet. Uh, if it was more distance, then it might be okay, but uh, uh the fact that the window is operable, so there will be noise from the bathrooms uh that the appellant will be able to hear from their deck. Um, and I think that is an intrusion of privacy, particularly a bathroom. Um. Uh, I'm not convinced, first of all, we we don't have a design for the slat, so we don't know if that would work or not work, but I don't think it would work. You're still going to have light spilling out uh and noise is still going to come uh come out and uh I like the private hedge, but that's not going to affect the lighter noise issue either. Uh, plants don't really uh affect noise transition that very well at all. I mean, so um uh let's see, um. Anyway, those are my observations at this point relative to the windows.
All right, understood. I I hear you. Yeah. All right, um, Dr. Bundy.
Uh, views and privacy are always the two biggest things that we have to deal with up here on a remodel or new house or or any project such as this. And um as a resident of Verner Cove, uh I've seen this issue come up before, especially in relationship to houses being raised. Um, we have a uh uh fencing and uh vegetation uh between my neighbor and myself. Uh, he raised his house up to level it and get it up above the floodplain. I haven't done that yet. When that happened, the uh bathroom window and other windows all, you know, came up into view. Well, it's eventually uh been resolved by putting a little more trellising up and putting some plants. Cape honeysuckle is uh has really solved uh the the issue of the visibility of it to a certain extent. But um but this is a tough problem when they're when they're uh five, six feet between the house and the fence. So I'm uh sorting through this.
Thank you, Bob. Uh, Mr. Rizzo, your thoughts?
Um, well, first of all, I'd just like to thank the applicant for raising their their house out of the floodplain, because we see a lot of applicants that do not and they put a substantial amount of investment in their properties, especially in this neighborhood. And we've seen some uh some projects go through that we've approved that um. I feel it. If I was owning the owning those homes, I would I would raise the home. So I I would and and I think the design is is very beautiful. Um, uses great sustainable materials, but but moving on just specifically to the light uh to what we're talking about today. I think my biggest issue is the actual where the location of those windows are directly in line with the middle of the deck. And um and I could see that having that light on uh during the evening, if you're out there enjoying a night uh under candlelight or something and someone goes in that bathroom, it's definitely going to affect the mood and the privacy of that uh gathering. So in 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 a case where we the houses were a little further apart and the windows would not be kind of directly aligned with the main living spaces, I think I might have a different view, but I I do have concern about the actual location of these specific windows, just because of where they're in relationship with the neighbor that is concerning to me. But I mean, I have more to say, but
Yeah.
you know.
Okay.
I I there is opportunities, I think, with the skylight and I and I and I kind of agree with uh uh the neighbor that it I think you're going to get a a great a a lot of light and a lot of ventilation and and windows kind of in showers and tubs are prob problematic anyway. A lot of people don't actually even open the windows uh for ventilation. They just kind of sit there and kind of actually rot locations for windows. They're not great places for windows, but um. Yeah, so I I think that there's other options that could satisfy both functions, function and aesthetics and neighbors.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Margaret, um, what are your thoughts?
Um, first, I I would congratulate both parties here because the compromises that I've seen made and the back and forth is really remarkable. We don't really see that that often. Um, and I especially congratulate um Todd and the Whitakers because the compromise that they've made and you all know how sensitive I am to views to me is tremendous. That's a huge. Um, that's a huge compromise in my opinion, and I think that taking down that date palm is is a compromise uh too, because it's to me, it's a beautiful tree. Um, just another general question is when something is giving up view, changing roofline, putting in windows, taking out windows and moving things around. I think the whole plan should have come to the planning commission. I don't think this should have been administratively done. I think it's a beautiful plan. I think the house is is very nice. Um, but I think there were so many changes going on here. It should have been a a planning commission issue. Those are my general comments.
All right, thank you very much. Um. This is probably the hardest set of issues that we face, as Bob says, um, when it comes to privacy and trees and windows. Uh, it's perpetually the the uh difficult one. People have to live with each other and um uh it's a it's a hard road to navigate. Um. First time I saw these uh black tape marks on the uh windows and on the wall and looked at the staff uh photos, I thought, oh, my goodness. Worst possible place for windows for this um deck out there, privacy deck. Um, it's it's but I look at the plan and I think all those bathrooms uh need windows. So it's a it's a perplexing problem. Um. I think that the design of the house as proposed is very good. It's just that these two windows are squarely uh in the line of sight and invasion of the neighbors um privacy. Um, also, I also respect Anton's right to build this, you know, it is really a a problem that here we are adjudicating to this uh neighbor issue. And there are plenty of people who would say that you guys don't have any business making these decisions. He has the right to put those windows in and put them wherever he wants to, but you know, we don't live in that world. We live in the world where we have to live with each other. Um, and um we've had those people in front of us. Uh, I'm going to have to face that aspect one day of my neighbor putting windows facing my private little yard. It's going to happen. I'm going to be powerless to stop it. I know that when the time comes. Um. Um. I'll I'll move. That'll be my solution. Um, uh, so this is um a uh an architectural solution in the in in need of, you know, something else needed to be done. In San Francisco, you have windows facing neighbors and they do wells. They do all kinds of things. They figure out a way to put windows in privacy screens, all kinds of things. Um, this is not San Francisco. This is squarely in your face. Um. I think that I understand these windows where they are. They probably stay open all the time. Um, except in the winter time, they'd stay open because they're in the shower or they're over the tub. As Jim says, you're not going to go in there and reach over the tub and open and close these windows all the time. Um, and in the shower, it's just going to stay open. Um. A a lot, I think. And I, if I were sitting on that deck, I wouldn't want to hear somebody taking a shower. It's just too close. Um, I I do appreciate that the private hedges could grow up and provide that light block. I think that the slat screen could do the trick, um, but it won't keep the noise out uh at all. So that's that's my feeling about it. So it's it's not a a good place to be in where these proposed windows are squarely in the view of the neighbor. That's a problem. So. Um, we can either uh continue to discuss it or we can uh uh entertain a a motion here, which would um given the predilection I'm hearing from the commissioner for this, which would be uh option number uh two, um, I believe uh in your staff report. Or we can um be more specific about what I want to say and on excuse. Response to this query. I'm sorry, option a number, uh, yeah. Option number two. Dan, do you have anything else you want to say?
This point may be minor, but as you and uh Jim have suggested, the location of those windows over the tub are problematic and the issue of a child opening the windows at that sill height, it's going to have to be a teenager. Uh, and um skylights these days, uh one of solar pan, you can let them run on solar panels. You can time them to open and close certain, you know, any schedule you want. And it's just a little button you push and it opens. So a child would be able to open a skylight, not these windows. So just a point of fact.
Yeah, thank you.
So, uh, Bob, do you have anything else you want to contribute? To this?
I know that it's particularly uh tough, I think, because the mitigation measures that have been put forward are the, you know, type of mitigation measures we've accepted for uh other
Right.
somewhat similar type things. Uh, the uh aspect of it uh being really right on the uh privacy deck uh that's been used, you know, ever since the Todd and his wife were in there. Um, does have an impact.
Margaret, do you want to say anything else?
When I looked at it and and I was struck by how close those windows are actually when you're standing there, how close the windows look to um the the Whitakers deck. And um, not only that, when I was sitting there, they looked like two eyeballs. They're outlined in black and and it's sort of like it just put an underline of of some of of this idea that, you know, visually it's just not pleasant to look at that. I mean, it not only um the light and the noise, uh but you think about what's going on in the bathroom when you're sitting on the deck. You're hearing the noise, you're you're I I just think it it because it's so close, it becomes intolerable. Um, Peter's going to move when that happens.
Not at a Quar Madara.
Um, the other thing that struck me and I hadn't realized is how many other skylights are are already incorporated into the home. And I'm sure that um well, I'm not sure, but these are inaccessible the way in the placement of of them. Practically speaking, I think that um skylights, uh, two other skylights or one other skylight and a very good fan or whatever solution comes up would uh solve the problem. And I don't know, imposing, given the number of compromises that have already gone on, I think this is just sort of compared to the loss of view, to me, this would be very little. Um, as a final compromise to put in skylights or big fans.
Okay. Do you have anything else?
Um.
This is a tough one, you know, uh, but but we're looking at the function of 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 uh the bathrooms. They're en suites. Uh, I think that you can uh the the windows are there for light and ventilation. I think that there's other options uh in play that can uh make both parties happy in the end. I mean, it it is that there are secondary bathrooms that are either used by children or or guests. Um. You know, maybe they don't even want to have the window open to the neighbors. I mean, it might obviously, it could be a violation of twenty-six channels privacy if if there was a party on the deck and you're taking a shower as well. Um, so I I think i- if we were to move uh to approve the appeal, I would also want to ensure that uh we could also put a condition in there that a skylight could be approved in that location, so they don't have to come back for a re-review.
Okay. Um, that's a question for staff. Um. In this case, um, you know, if that could be a possibility, um, I would ask a question of Anne um, who's listening intently. Um. That we could just, uh, do we just scratch out some words in this uh resolution? Um, or does it need to be rewritten entirely?
I would recommend that you send it back to be rewritten. I I think that there's too much surgery required here for us to do it on the fly.
Okay, and and I would also say I I don't think we can sort of put anything in there that would waive the right of another appeal. So if you know, i- the resolution could say it upholds the appeal. Um. And then I think they would have to revise the you know, i- there's some other revision to it. That would be an amendment to their prior approval that would have its own appeal rights.
Okay, so that said, um um, we move forward by um uh making a motion to uh just a simple resolution, voice, voice saying that we would um uh allow the deny the allow the appeal.
I would say to direct staff to come back with a resolution granting the appeal um and directing that the uh two windows in question be removed from the approved design.
And and if I may just, um am I correct? Would you agree with the fact that whatever the proposed redesign would be um a skylight or what have you would have to then be um essentially reapproved if there is another change beside if the windows, because I think we're, what we're saying is there's going to have to be a change to the to the design of that area of the house in order to remove the windows. We don't know exactly what that is at this point. But at the time that is um that modification is made, we would have to essentially reapprove that aspect of the project.
We could offer to the applicant uh the option of continuing the matter and letting them come back uh with a design that omits the windows that is satisfactory to them. And the planning commission could decide whether or not they would grant the appeal and direct the modification as set forth in the revised application. That way the applicant can figure out what the solution is that's most workable for them.
Okay.
From a SaaS perspective, I would hope we would be able to do that. Um, but I would I'll actually, but I'll le- leave it to
Right, so we would have the option here of uh saying to the applicant, uh, do you want to just continue this to a date uncertain? Uh, or do you want us to um approve the appeal?
I I think I think the 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 question for the commission in the first instance is whether or not the commission would be comfortable with allowing the staff to appeal, the zoning administrator to to approve a design that omits the um the uh windows. That way the applicant wouldn't have to come back to the planning commission. It could just be done at a staff level.
So can I ask a question?
Yes.
So are we saying that they can redesign the windows in that position?
No.
Or are we seeing that there are no windows in that position? What what are we saying?
We would be saying that those windows are not allowed in this design.
Any window, okay.
Right.
So then the staff would would be approving whatever alternative has been proposed.
Correct.
And would the uh Todd have?
He would still have appeal rights to that.
So he would have to appeal again if he didn't like it.
Right.
He might need a scholarship.
Right.
Well, regardless regardless of who approves the change that the applicant's going to have to come up with. Um, if Mr. Whitaker doesn't care. Um, i- if Mr. Whittaker doesn't care for it, he would still have to appeal again.
I I didn't hear that.
Yeah, she's saying just what we said, that if he did not like, Mr. Whittaker did not like the proposed changes, he would have to appeal that.
Okay.
Okay, Bob.
So going with the uh sense of the commission that the windows are an impact on privacy and the light and noise. Uh, I want to make it as easy as possible for Anton to then just go back and get staff approval. Uh, assuming that removing the windows is gonna satisfy the Whitakers from that standpoint. So that's that's what we're talking about right now, right?
Yes.
Okay, the and just as a final comment and agreeing with uh. Uh, Margaret in relationship to the uh palm trees. Uh, there are a lot of these that are in the neighborhood, it's very hard to get anything to grow. In on bay mud, you know, and you've got a little bit of soil sitting on top of bay mud. I haven't uh seen even the royal palms, which are much taller and often have a lot of fronds hanging off of them. Uh, go down and uh a number of them are close to the water. They really are exceptionally beautiful trees, they are, you do have to maintain them, they are expensive, but. Getting something else to grow is no sure thing and. I haven't had any success with Meyer lemons and getting them to grow, and so, you know, I would uh just. Make a pitch to redesign the deck. So that you could at least keep the one uh Canary Island Palm. Uh, I realize the other one has to go because it's in the footprint. But that's just my final pitch, it's not just eucalyptus trees that I care about.
All right, so we can put that all in the resolution. Here we are saying, and we need a motion for this to uh approve uh the uh. Appeal application, PL twenty-three uh dash zero seven, zero zero, zero seven.
And then Pete, Peter, sorry to interrupt you, also need to provide direction to staff to return with the resolution.
Okay.
Um, that it. Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so I was gonna get the commission to uh unanimously, unanimously say so um by a form of this, so. That's what we're saying, that we're asking as a resolution to you to come back to us with a. Modified uh. Resolution here in respect with respect to these issues.
I guess I have a a point of order, we're having voted. Uh, and while it seems like how we're leaning.
That's what we're getting to.
Okay.
We're going to do, uh, and we're gonna take a vote, a vote here, I need a re- I need a motion from somebody for that.
All right, I think I got it.
Okay. I was really trying to. Not have uh the them return uh to the planning commission for this, hoping that uh. You know, the the motion of the uh uh commission is to uh not allow the windows, if that's taken out. They use skylights and ventilation fans, uh, that goes back to uh the planning department and they could approve it as. Was done with the original plans before the appeal, I'm trying to make it as easy as possible on the applicant. And uh also the staff.
That is what the revised resolution would say, that the applicants would not need to come back. The revised resolution would say that they would get the approval from staff.
Perfect.
And but but I think the point is that revised resolution would need to come back to the planning commission in two weeks.
Yes.
Right, I think Commissioner Bundy was trying to avoid that, but I think that's okay, we can come back.
It would be a a continued uh. Hearing then.
Yes, it could, but it could be a consent calendar matter since you've already taken public testimony.
All right.
All right, with that said. So we have a a motion to direct staff to come back to us with a revised resolution regarding this matter.
I don't think so. I think Jim was gonna make that.
Okay, yeah, that's what he has to do, somebody has to make that statement.
Uh, I'm gonna make a motion uh in the matter uh. To approve the appeal application, PL two-three dash zero zero seven.
Yeah. We're not approving that.
Yes, we're approving the appeal with with condition of the modification of the resolution, correct?
May i- i- if I may, uh, you're making a motion to direct staff to come back with a resolution denying the appeal. And authorizing staff to approve a revision to the design, which does not include the windows that were the subject to the appeal.
Wait.
Okay, that was like, that was way too much, um.
Grant the appeal and authorize staff to approve an amendment to the de- design that does not include the windows.
What she said.
That's what what Anne said. Um. But we are, we're. We're not. We're directing staff. To.
Right. Return.
Return. The resolution.
With a resolution.
The resolution that. That we're approving the appeal though.
Yes, granting the appeal.
Granting the appeal. And to come back with a modified resolution. To the application, PL two-three dash zero zero seven. Um, requesting modification of the zoning administrator's approval of the design review application, PL two-two. Dash zero zero one nine at twenty-six channel drive.
Good enough.
I I. I I think that's what you're.
Yeah.
We're directing staff to come back with with a modified resolution approving. This application of appeal.
Now approving the appeal, not the application.
Approving the app, approving the appeal.
Right. Well, that said, let's have. A second over here.
Second.
Okay, and let's take a roll call.
Commissioner Kenny?
In favor, I.
Commissioner Bundy?
Yes.
Chair Chase?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rizzo?
Yes.
Commissioner Bandell?
Yes.
All right. Yeah. There are no such things as appeal rates here. Um, thank you very much for all your effort here and. Coming in to present this to us, thank you. Yeah.
Yeah, it's a great design on the house, so it's it's still gonna be a great design.
And are there no appeal rights for?
Actually, there are appeal rights, excuse me, I I apologize, there are appeal rights for the applicants, the applicants could appeal the result. Not until after the resolution is adopted.
Okay.
Could appeal it after that point.
Got it.
All right, thanks to everyone, um.
Yeah, stand. Sorry about.
Yeah, no, no, that's all right, you know, um. So we can make quick work of uh item B, if we are in, we're loose to do that, or do you need a break over here, anybody?
I'll be making quick work of it.
Let's see that, um, let's go to uh try and see what uh two hundred Nellen brings up for, so item B on new hearings tonight is two hundred Nellen Avenue. This is a permit amendment application, PL twenty-two dash zero zero eight six to amend previously approved sign permit. Uh, design review approval, PL twenty-two dash zero zero seven four to add a new round sixty-four square foot. Illuminated sign for Twin Cities Vet Hospital on the north elevation of the existing building. Okay, we have lots of pages for this, and Tracy, you uh got your name on it.
Yes, thank you Chair Chase, um, I just wanted to add that the room is. Empty, but there are several attendees um related to this application that are on Zoom. Um, we have Dr. Press, who's the veterinarian, head veterinarian at the Twin Cities Vet Hospital. And I see two representatives, excuse me. Maybe I was wrong. Are you correcting me, Dr. Press? Oh. Okay, um, we have, it looks like the property owner um and two representatives from the sign company, Arrow Sign.
All right, so you're gonna explain this uh to everybody and um.
One second. One moment. There we go, okay. Uh, thank you Chair Chase, Vice Chair Rizzo and Commissioners, hi again. Um, as you stated, the commission tonight is considering a permit amendment application uh to amend a previously approved uh sign permit design review application, which would. Allow for the applicant to add a round illuminated sign for Twin Cities Vet Hospital on the north elevation of two hundred. Ellen Avenue. This is showing the project site, it's on C three highway commercial, it's situated at the southwest corner of Pfeiffer Avenue and Nellen Avenue west of. One oh one. Two hundred Nellen Avenue is an approximately eight thousand square foot, two-story mixed-use building, uh, was, construction was completed in twenty twenty. The entire first story is occupied by Twin Cities Vet Hospital since about October two thousand twenty-two. The second story is intended for office use and is partially occupied by the property owner's administrative offices. And the building itself is a contemporary design with large areas of vertically oriented glazing broken up with. Horizontal awning stucco and. And aluminum fascia, the main roof is is wing-shaped. Um, and the building uses um. An elevator tower and exterior stairway as design elements rather than incorporating them into the interior of the building, which um gives the building. A a unique um and iconic design. No changes are proposed to the exterior other than the addition of the new round sign on the north elevation. The zoning administrator approved a sign permit design review application in September twenty twenty-two for the four signs shown on this slide. They read Twin Cities Vet Hospital um and are positioned above the four entry doors on the east elevation of the building. Attachment two is the approval letter um. Uh, made uh with the decision by the zoning administrator and attachment. Three are sign drawings and that sheets one, one point one and three. Show the previously approved uh signs. That building permit was issued for the signs. Um, shown, uh, photograph is shown of them here, the building permit was issued October twenty-eighth. Twenty twenty-two and installation obviously is complete. And a standard condition added to any designer view approval is that um any changes to the approved plans um require written approval. By the planning department and that the planning director may refer any proposed amendments to an approved sign permit design review to the planning commission for review. The applicant approves proposes to amend the existing um approval to include the new round um sign that you see here on the right-hand side of this slide. Um. The sign that you're evaluating is sheet, attachment three, uh, sheets two and three point one. The proposed sign is round, it's eight feet by eight feet, which computes to sixty-four square feet in sign area. And together with the existing signs uh on the building. Uh, the applicant um would be installing a total of ninety-one square feet of total sign area where a hundred and fifty square feet is allowed. A master sign program is not required at this time uh for the building. The. That is the sole tenant at the lower floor, um, the upper floors offices, and they don't propose any signage. If in the future, um. The, there are additional signs proposed, then uh it would require a master sign program before the planning commission to ensure a unified. Sign program. And there is a condition of approval, conditional approval number eight was added specifically to address master sign program requirements, um, if that need should arise. Here's a a drawing of the. Sign uh proposed to be installed on the elevator tower on the north elevation of the building. It will be constructed of aluminum with a white panel face and the Twin Cities Vet Hospital illustration applied to the face. The applicant proposes uh to illuminate the sign um internally with LED lighting. Attachment three includes a a drawing of the proposed sign and a rendering of the sign at nighttime. Um, that's sheet two and three, three point one. Is the same as what's shown here on the screen, a north elevation, there's also a rendering of sign placement shown on sheet nine of the plan's photographic rendering. Um. The. The sign will be mounted um. Thirty feet. Uh, above the ground on the elevator tower. Measure from the ground to the bottom of the sign and staff had some concerns with the size and. And positioning and positioning of the sign, and to address these concerns, the applicant supplied. An inventory of signage. In Corta Madera and the inventory includes signs in the vicinity as well as signs near the freeway. Throughout Corta Madera, um, that is sheet six to eight of the drawings. The uh inventory shows that the proposed sign is approximately twelve square feet in area smaller than the average size of signage that they included in the inventory. Um, the largest sign in inventory is big five, it's about two hundred and forty square feet in area, the smallest sign is the REI sign at twenty-six square feet. In area. Inventory also shows that the proposed sign would be mounted about nine and a half feet. Uh, higher above the ground than the average sign in the inventory. The sign in inventory that's highest above the ground is uh also approximately thirty feet above. The ground, that's Marin Suites, and the lowest sign is SF Fitness, which is about twelve feet um above the ground. Zoning ordinance does regulate the size of building signage, um, but it does not regulate. The um height at which a sign is mounted above the ground, other than a sign cannot be mounted on the roof of a building. Staff is able to make all design review findings that are necessary um for a sign permit design review analysis of those findings is in the resolution, which is attachment one to your staff report. Staff is recommending approval of this application, and I I'm happy to answer questions, and as I stated earlier, um, we have. The sign vendor represented from the sign vendor is with us via Zoom. Uh, as well as property owner and the owner of the Twin Cities Vet Hospital, I can give you questions for them, I can take a moment to promote them to panelists.
Okay, before we uh get their presentation, um, we'll see if the commissioners have any questions for you about this, uh, Dr. Bundy.
Uh, yes, I was confused on this, uh, because uh some renderings uh show it as a square sign. And at sixty-four feet, that would be a square sign, eight by eight. Uh, but the round sign, which is shown, you know, on sh- shown as just a round sign. Uh, on the elevator uh shaft, I I think looks quite appropriate. Uh, I it 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 seems a little big at eight feet, but uh. I really wanted to understand whether it's just gonna be a to- a round sign or there's. Uh, uh, a squareness to it uh with. Other colors or other aspects to it.
It's a round sign, and I think the sign vendor can speak to their manufacturing methods and how that will be achieved. Uh, but it's round and the way that we measure sign area is with a straight line, so we've drawn a straight line around the box, so with uh other signs have um. Cursive lettering, for instance, Amy, so you'd have to draw a bo- draw a box.
Uh huh.
Around the line, around the sign, uh, to get sixty-four, so you're right, the circum- the actual area of the sign would be the circumference of an eight inch.
Okay.
Diameter circle, but that's not what our sign ordinance tells us in terms of deciding what the size of the sign is, but it's it's round and I'll I'll ask the um. Arrow Sign Company to explain how that's gonna be fabricated.
No, that's, but it's, I just really wanted to be assured that it was gonna be round, thank you.
Uh, Bob, were you referring to this page uh two that has a square, yeah, I think that they just took a. They made a square background for the rounds, hey, okay, I think that's what they did, but we'll find out from those guys, yeah, right. Uh, Mr. Rizzo, do you have any questions for staff here?
No, I don't.
Okay. Margaret?
I don't have any questions.
And Daniel? You're paging over there.
Yeah, paging.
So, uh, with the master sign program. How does that work? In other words, this particular user is now consuming some. Portion of the sign allowance based on the sign code. Uh, and a location, so. if another or more users come in, this is a given without a sign program for the building. It now constrains possibly what others could do. And is there been a condition where we asked them to develop a master sign program even if they don't know who the tenant's going to be on the second floor? But where signs could go and what sign they could be? So we're looking holistically at this and not in a one world?
The master sign program will be required when any building has more than one tenant with signage or any shopping center. And that's not the case with 200 Nellan. So we couldn't force them into a master sign program, but we can condition the approval of this that if there is any additional tenant signage proposed, which our code also requires, not just a condition of approval, that that master sign program is at that point developed. And could it require potentially no elevator sign? Certainly. And of course, the master sign program can specify, this is what our codes is, any, some are all the following size, material, location, design, color, lighting and construction of each sign.
Isn't there someone using the second floor?
That there is, there's offices on the second floor.
There's two. So why isn't the sign program required? Because two occupants.
No signage is proposed by those occupants. The second, second floor office doesn't want any signs.
Any clear way to say it is a sign, a sign program is required if two or more tenants desire signs. That'd be more not just two or more tenants. And I think maybe, maybe Commissioner Kenny is asking if so if another tenant, let's just say the office building upstairs only took half and the, and the second half of the two-story, of the second floor office became retail or whatever, somebody wanted a sign. I think then the applicant, the property owner, probably combination of property owner and the tenants come in and say, we want to, we're required to have a master sign program. And they would submit their master sign program to us. And staff would review it. And then staff would bring it to the planning commission. And I guess that, this never happened, but perhaps that master sign program could say, okay, round veterinary sign. You're, we have other tenants, you're too big. And we want you to be smaller and maybe we want one other sign to go on the, on the chimney. Or we don't want anymore. And so they can, they can, I think more or less, you start from scratch. If they wanted to.
And part of the reason why you're seeing every sign at the town center is because they have a master sign program which was approved by the commission at one point and they've since made changes to it and haven't brought it back. So you're seeing every sign at the town center. Across the street from this particular site is 101 Nellan, which has a master sign program and specifies sign area that's allowed based on least area of the tenant. So you have to be an anchor tenant at a certain least area or major tenant at a certain least area to have one of the three signs. Any other sized tenant is not part of their master sign program. So there's a lot of there is some flexibility for the commission in consideration of a master sign program if that's eventually needed for this site.
Are there any specifications for internally lit signs in terms of lumens? Or is it impacted by the dark sky ordinance?
On the resolution speaks to sign lighting. We'll find that for you. It doesn't discuss lumens. It is on page six of the resolution, attachment, attachment one. And it specifies that illuminated signs shall not create excessive glare on adjoining streets and properties. Timers shall be set to turn off illuminated signs at the close of business for 11:00 PM and that they shall be controlled by dimmers. So it's, it's rather subjective in terms of.
Yeah. So how would we know whether the sign creates excessive glare?
We evaluate lit signs after they're installed at any given site. We have in the past adjusted and part of the reason why they need to have dimmers adjusted, those sign lighting. It has come up a few times in the commissions past where they've noted interior lights at businesses and sign lighting. That was too bright.
And then our dark sky ordinance doesn't, doesn't apply to let signs?
We don't have a dark sky ordinance or any parameters as far as.
Our exterior, yeah, our exterior lighting condition of approval, which is called the bug rating. It has, it's, it's two things. You can submit a, an exterior light and it has to either be stamped by the night sky compliant organization or it has to meet the BUG rating and BUG is backlight, uplight and glare. It's more specific way. And I'm talking to all the lighting folks, I've never heard of those qualifications for signs, much more for parking lot lights or exterior lights. But as Tracy said, in terms of just general brightness, we have the ability to require them to to put a dimmer and just turn it down, but it's not as, doesn't seem to me as quantitative with signs as it is with other type of lighting. Okay, thanks.
I will just say that the applicants in the town have worked closely in the past to adjust the lights after they've been installed because there's no good qualitative way of saying how bright is that sign? Right? You can't say the sign is going to be this bright effectively given the plastic, the lettering, all that stuff. That's just how it's worked out. It's been okay with everybody so far, right? They dimmed them down at the direction of staff as necessary. So that's and it's not an explicit understanding, right? But you have the dimmer in here inside the resolution that they will dim it if requested, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. That's the best I can say about it. I don't know what else you might want to say about that. Hope that answers some of that. Okay, so shall we go directly to the applicants? You guys didn't have any commentary right now, great questions. Yeah. So let's bring them on.
I'm moving, I know Tim Brown is from the sign company. I'm just taking a moment to remote him to panelists. I'm not sure if the veterinarian or the property owner is here, they can raise their hands.
So while we're waiting, it's the Jackovics want to have their offices upstairs, right? That's what's going on. Right? Okay.
They have their offices upstairs currently. Yeah, the owner, the owner of the building is the Jackovics and they have their offices upstairs. They used to be across the street. Maybe they still are as well. I'm not sure.
I think we have the two representatives from the sign company on. They should be able to unmute themselves. They have something to say. It's Tim Brown is the account manager.
Hi folks, thank you. I would defer to Nikki to, to begin this for ours, for us.
Go ahead, Nikki. Are you able to unmute yourself, Nikki?
Hi. I'm Nikki with Arrow Sign Company. I do the permitting for the company. We're excited about this sign. We feel that it's very complimentary to the architecture of the building. It creates a presence within the purview from the freeway and from the Nellan Avenue approach. We placed it at the height because there are existing trees that block the view. As is indicated in, I believe, one of the photos on Tracy's wonderful report. Sign lighting, the way it's designed is you know, the letters, the sign is made of aluminum with routed out letters of Twin Cities Vet Hospital. There is a vinyl covering that has routed our pinhole that allows the LED lights to shine through in the evening. So during the day it looks black and then at night the white LED lights shine through. We've done so many signs along the freeways and have never had an issue with creating glare or anything like that, but have adhered to codes within other cities for dimmers and it has worked out great. You know, we've had no complaints. Yes, so we just believe this would be an enhancement and advertise the building or the business appropriately and we're excited to move forward with the project.
Okay, who else would like to speak for the applicant?
I see a Dr. Press. This is her hand raised for quite some time. I'm just adding her as panelist as well. She should be rejoining us in a moment. Mary, you should be able to unmute yourself. You can use your camera if you like.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Mary Press and I own the Twin Cities Vet Hospital. I'm super excited to be here. And I just wanted to introduce myself and say that I just, I want to be a constructive part of our community. And I think a sign just representing the vet hospital would be awesome. Thank you.
Oh, come on, Mary. Sorry, she sees the clock. Right, okay. Does anybody have any questions for the applicants here? At this point? Yeah?
Yeah, this is a question, I think, for the sign designers. What studies have you done to determine the size of the sign in terms of visibility from the exit ramp? And and also the impact of internal versus a sign that's lit by, by lights in terms of the effectiveness of the sign?
That's a question for Arrow Sign. Yeah.
Yes. We haven't done studies per se that I'm aware of. We adhere to codes. So in studying various cities' codes, I noticed that usually signs are required to be below the roof line. And in this case, we consider the roof line to be the top of the facade that the sign is attached to. So even though it is parallel with the building's roof, it is well below the top of the elevator tower. So we would consider that to satisfy code. A lot of other cities would say you aren't allowed to take up more than 75% or you're allowed to cover 75% of the facade that it's attached to. Circumstances like that. So we just design per the city's code.
So you don't know, so you don't, so how did you come about the sign that's eight feet by eight feet?
I could defer to Tim, but what I understand is this is an existing logo of Twin Cities Vet. And well within the purview of the code and also promotes visibility from the freeway. So somebody going northbound on 101 will be able to view it on Nellan Avenue without having to slow down to see it, you know, that kind of thing. So but no studies per se. A lot of codes say that signs cannot be flashing or visibly distracting. But there are no laws other than that. So no moving parts, no flashing, no color changes in some codes, but other than that, there are no other rules that I know of.
Some of the examples you gave in in the signs around the area. For example, REI and the Bay Club. I'm sure they have similar concerns about visibility from 101 and they're half the size. They're about 26 and 30 square feet. So would that accomplish the same thing since obviously it's working for them?
I don't think those signs have the nuance that this sign does. And it's also their branding. So we go with an entity's branding and design from there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll come back to that. I'll help you with that a little bit then. Bob, any questions for these guys? Anybody? No, no. Okay. All right. So we've heard from the applicant at this point. And does the applicant have anything else to say regarding these signs? Anybody online there? I don't think so, but just checking.
Go ahead, raise your hand. Any of the attendees related to this application, if you want to say anything.
No other comments from me. I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll then open this up to public comment and see if there's anybody that wants to make a comment regarding this item. Just anybody in the room, anybody?
Yeah.
Nothing.
No hands raised.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So then we'll close the public comment section. We'll bring it back here. I think yeah, I appreciate your question about that. In the resolution, there are some, or the discussion, the findings. They talk about the allowed square footage and so forth of the signage on the building there, what can happen according to the Cortumadera Municipal Code. Size of the sign, but you're asking if it could be smaller than what they proposed. Yeah. With that said, I was wondering the same thing. And I drove down from the north looking for at that building to see, you know, what would be okay. Eight feet I thought was a big sign, right? And I was worried about that. I went over to the building and measured those panels on the side of the building. So the two center panels are all about 52 inches. So the, they don't show up in the elevation, but there's four panels on that, on the side of the building. And so the sign would be less than two of those panels wide. And that's less, that's over eight feet. So I thought, okay, what's visible coming down the highway and it needs to be that size. That was my sort of conclusion when I looked at that as I drove down from the north, trying to identify what's visible. Trying to identify what's visible from on the side of the building or anything. But maybe if it was too large, but I defined it as being two panels wide and I thought that was okay. That was my approach to measuring it onsite, I'm taking a look at it. Okay, so we're in the realm of comments, so anybody, including yourself, may make a comment about this sign.
I'd like to hear from the other commissioners.
Okay, Dr. Bundy.
I'm good with it.
Yeah, I mean, I think the size of the sign and the location and the height, you know, facing the freeways is probably appropriate. Because that's kind of how we're using it as a wayfinding tool. I was a little concerned about the size as well because of the, I'm looking at the bay, the Bay Club, which is six feet, which is, you know, two feet smaller. But also the sixty-four square feet, when when you really look at it, is 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 measured by the square, not necessarily by the square footage of the sign. Whereas you can see some of the other signs like they don't even come nearly as close square footage wise, but still think it's pretty appropriate size for the location. Maybe if it was not in that location, I would feel differently. I would say though, in reading the code, that maybe one of the reasons it is so big is because of the way the way the code reads, because there's two streets. Your allowable square footage is is increased, I've seen it done in different jurisdictions where it's proportion of the side of the building only. But in our code, it reads, you can you can use the square footage of both sides of the facades. Or the square footage of the land, I believe, is that right, Tracy? There's two ways to define square footage.
One, the the front elevation of the building in linear feet plus one street side, as long as it's not across the street from residential. Or open space or one of lot length of lot frontage plus one street side, a lot frontage. And 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 it's half a foot if you use lot frontage. And it's one foot if you use building frontage and for this site, it equates to approximately the same, just over a hundred and fifty square feet of allowed signage. And our code says you can have, you can base the amount of signage that you're allowed to have on those two parameters. But in no case can it exceed one fifty and that's why they're left with one one fifty.
Yeah, we could get into trouble if this was a really narrow building. Because proportionally, it would look really, really bad, but I I think in this case. You know, I could see making the findings for this.
Thank you, Margaret, how about you?
I I drive past this every day, coming from the north and going home. The purpose of the sign is to help people get off the highway, get on the highway. Get off the highway, basically, and and right now the visual of of Twin City Vet Hospital, whatever it is, above the doors, you don't see that till you pass it. It needs sort of a marker and I think about the the Best Western Hotel sign. Because people are looking where to get off the highway with an animal in the car or to find a motel or whatever. It needs to be up that high and, you know, the size for the space it's going to be put at. Seems appropriate to me.
Okay, that's good, thank you. All right, so I also agree with the commissioners that I thought it was an appropriate size and an appropriate location. And it's necessary to bring awareness to that function of the building. So here we are, we've heard from everybody primarily, can we have a motion for this?
I'll try to redeem myself here on this one. Like to make a motion in the matter of permit amendment application PL two two dash zero zero eight six. Who amend previously approved sign permit design review approval PL two two dash zero zero seven four to add a new round sixty-four square foot illuminated sign for Twin Cities Vet Hospital on the north elevation of the existing building.
Second.
Commissioner Kenny?
I vote no.
Commissioner Bundy?
Yes.
Chair Chase?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rizzo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Bandell?
Yes.
Motion carries for one.
Thank you, is there a appeal right for this kind of approval?
Yes, any decision of the planning commission can be appealed. At Town Council within ten calendar days, your forms are available on our website or at Town Hall.
All right, thank you very much. We have a couple of people waiting in the room very patiently for the next piece, two oh six Baltimore Avenue. We're going to take a short break, we'll be right back.
Recording in progress.
Hi, we're back here. Hi, we're back and we're here. For the final item of the night. This is two oh six Baltimore Avenue, a major design review application PL twenty-two dash zero zero seven one. For a eleven hundred eighty-one square foot second level addition. Modifications to the existing single story home and lot at two oh six Baltimore Avenue. We saw this item as a study review session previously and Mr. Boyle is going to make a presentation to us.
Thank you Chairman Chase and members of the public. I'll make this relatively brief for two reasons, once you saw it already as a preliminary review back in December and the late hour. So yes, this is a this is a second story addition to an existing single family home that was constructed back in nineteen twelve. It's part of one of the original residential areas of Corder Madera. The roughly twelve thousand square foot partial contains numerous structures in addition to the main house. And I'll show those on the site plan. The property is located, as you can see on this vicinity map, at the intersection of Willow Avenue and Baltimore Avenue. And just to give you, I've sort of cut the site plan into two pieces just to make it easier to see because it's pretty a lot going on. So the the front half of the site plan is basically the major changes are a carport is being installed between the home and the existing garage. The garage itself is being modified and and added on to a new roof area. And then the greenhouse, which is currently attached to the back of the house, is being moved from the main house and attached to the existing garage. Some other small changes to this part of the site plan are some reconfiguration of the front stairs to the front porch. And a wall along the front property line and then a security vehicle gate. Back approximately twenty feet from the front property line, so it's outside of the the front setback. I would note also, I was talking to the applicant earlier and he is, they are proposing garbage structures just just underneath the G of the greenhouse there. And those actually will need to be modified because you you can't have structures like that in the front setback. I'm saying garbage cans, but they can't put, you know, a box there that holds the garbage. So they're open to to rethinking that and reevaluating that before they submit for a building permit if if this is approved. And modifications to the site in in the rear are the laundry room building is being, or the laundry building, I should say, is being removed, which is at the back of the lot. Again, this is showing the new site plan, so the building isn't there. The accessory buildings are being removed that are to the right of building A. And new paving and decking is proposed throughout the site. None of these these items have changed since the prelim in terms of the the basic site plan changes. And the proposed first level will consist of the primary suite on on the left. A large living room in the middle of the building, the stairs to the left, left side of the building. And then the great room at the back right consisting of kitchen dining area. And opening out to the exterior deck. And then upper left is utility room and mudroom washer and dryer and various things. On the second level, we have two bedrooms and three baths and one guest room. Guest room slash office and of course the stairway here, so that's the proposal for the second level. In terms of second level, in terms of elevations, we have the existing front elevation. And again, none of this has changed from the prelim, except for the color, which I've talked about in the staff report. I'll just mention that now, the color has changed and actually Commissioner Kenny has the materials board or all of you have seen the materials board, the applicant can speak to it more directly, but the the gray has been lightened. That's not the extent of the of the color description I'll give at this point, certainly the applicant can probably talk to, talk more about that. So proposed front of elevation looks like this with the the old, the historic window. That is in the existing home, you can see here to the right of the stair, that window is going to be saved. And moved over relocated to the left of the door, the left of the new position of the door. And then the upper upper windows are the guest room on the left and a bedroom on the right. And using a hip roof for the second level to to try to soften the front elevation. All of the the architectural interest above in the gable of the first level that exists today. That is all going to remain, however, you know, the color change may make it look somewhat different. But the the structural and the wood pieces themselves are going to say, going to say, stay. However, the the rafter tails, as as we talked about a little bit the earlier meeting, that extend all the way are shown here. And then extend all the way on the length of the building on the right hand side. And I believe on the left as well, those will be will be changed to the more simpler rafter tails that are shown here. So that's your front elevation, existing rear elevation. Again, dominated by that that greenhouse, which is going away. And the proposed rear elevation will look like so. Again, hip roof, which is set back from the the first level. Rear wall, the bank of windows is proposed in the lower left. According windows that open out from that great room onto the deck. And then upper left is bedroom and then upper right is is a bathroom. Think I have that right, but double check. Yes, yeah, thank you. Existing east elevation, which is the one that faces the garage and and the other part of the the property, looks like so. Proposed adding the chimney, again, the the bank of windows that you saw that kind of wraps around to the rear. Windows on either side of the chimney into the great room. And then up above, small windows for for bathrooms and and the bedrooms. And then again, once again, using using hip design to kind of soften the, reduce the mass of the second level. West elevation facing the closest neighbors, trying to reduce any impacts or privacy impacts. Or minimize any privacy impacts to those folks with the second level addition. Those windows are again bathrooms on the upper left stairway, the next one to the right. And bathroom again, to the right again. And then the farthest one in the upper right is is the guest room. Lower level windows, again, one for the, one being a clear story, again, to minimize impact, privacy impacts to the neighbors. And moving on, the summary of the project won't go into a lot of detail of all this. But just generally, the specifically, the project meets all of the requirements of the code in terms of floor area ratio, lot coverage setbacks, parking. I do want to, I did find an error in my staff report, I think I said that the parking doesn't change, but the parking does change from one one table, I show it didn't change, the parking does change from two covered spaces to two covered spaces and one uncovered. And that is required because the total building is more than four thousand square feet and therefore they need three legal parking spaces, which they have. In terms of the the changes that the applicant has done in response to the preliminary hearing back in November and December. Those are extensive public outreach, which you see in the staff report and I'll talk about a little bit more. They have lightened exterior color slightly, as I mentioned. And they've saved the old window in the front, as I mentioned, solar panels are proposed for the garage and the carport. And the entry gate and carport design has have been redesigned to be more transparent and allow a better view into the the back of the lot. And then lastly, they have called out the tree that will replace the large cypress that is proved to be removed and they're proposing a maple tree at that location. In terms of public outreach, this is in the staff report. And the only addition to the, basically, green stars equal letters of support. Blue squares equal folks that have been contacted but didn't respond. Except for that has changed as I send an email to you all. Eight Taylor Lane has spoken with the applicant and are, they're verbal okay with the project. And then four seventy-five, it's actually four seventy-five and four seventy-one, Alexander, which is in Larksburg. They have spoken with that gentleman as well and he was at the meeting on December and he gave a positive verbal to Mr. Gilotti and and the applicant. So they maybe are talk more about that. Did not, staff did not receive any written comments from, directly from the public for or against the project. All the correspondence that was in your packet came from the applicant's outreach. And with all that, staff recommends that we can make all the findings for design review and recommends that planning commission approve resolution twenty-three zero zero seven one. And the applicant, of course, is here, the owner and architect, and I answer any questions that you may have.
All right, great, commissioners, questions for staff? Mr. Kenny, do you have any questions for Phil?
No questions.
Dr. Bundy?
No.
Okay, Mr. Rizzo.
I was just curious about some of those variances, those buildings in the back. Wrote a note here and I don't even understand it. There was an existing, the existing house was there and then and then the the two little one bedroom houses were added as a variance or was was a zone differently at some point or?
There, I provided that building report in the last, our application for residential building records, which shows all the different permits that have been approved. And to answer your question, yes, there were variances that were approved in the past, back in eighty-nine, ninety-six. And those are the two, those are two variants on records and that's attachment.
There is rear yard, you set back variances, but it all needs the the floor area ratio and lot coverage requirements, sounds like.
I'm sorry, say again?
It's still today, it even with this square footage in the rear yard setback, which is seems like that's what the variance was granted. That it still meets all the design criteria for FAR and floor area.
And lot coverage, yes, it does.
Correct, yeah, thanks.
I'm just looking at this board. And maybe, I don't know if you can answer this or not, Phil, it's it's this one color. It says monochromatic color design, the entire house and everything about it is going to be this color.
That's my understanding unless the
Other than the roof signals.
Correct.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Window's going to be closed depending on the manufacturer, so try to match that as close as possible. If not, a custom match.
Okay.
Yeah, and nothing else.
Okay. I do not have any questions, so it's time for you to make a presentation.
So Phil, you have the the drawings that I'll just, I guess verbally kill you. Okay. So, thank you. I just want to address primarily the. Issues that were brought up last time by the commission and I think we have addressed all of those. The story polls did go up in between. That meeting and now, so hopefully you had a chance to go out and take a look at that. We did add solar panels. We were planning to do that anyway, but we didn't realize it was important for the planning. Commission, but we hope to have the house primarily run entirely on. Through solar power. So we added that both to the carport roof and the garage roof. Obviously, we will need to circle back with a consultant just to see what the exact square footage. Would need to be for those, but I think we have adequate space there to pull that off. As mentioned, we've lightened the gray color of the house. And I'll just, I'll just go through this list here and then I'll go back to the drawings. We tend to jump around when we present sometimes. There was the front tree, which is a cypress. There was an old cypress, it was a beautiful tree, but unfortunately. Due to the storms in January and the high winds, additional limbs came down and it was. Should come down, so that tree in the interim between the first planning. Mission meeting, the pre-planning meeting, and now that tree has come down. Taken down. We are going to address the. What's that? Right, it was, there was a tree permit applied for and granted. Phil mentioned the the recycling and garbage area in the front at the time we. Find that we were not aware actually that that could not be in the front setback, but we. Will move it back to be incorporated somewhere. Such that it's out of sight. Not as visible. There were some concerns about the street front foliage in front of the garage. There's. A sizable palm tree there, it's probably twenty feet tall, but around it, there's some overgrown brush. And my clients are obviously willing to clean up that area. The driveway gate and privacy issue that was brought up. I in talking to. Dick Gilati, he had some concerns about having too much transparency there. The fact that it's a double wide lot, I think. There is quite a bit of transparency. We are installing a three foot wall across most of the property. But without any, with with full transparency in the gate there. I think the. The I would be afforded with very little privacy back there, but seeing as it's a double wide lot. I think there's plenty of transparency relative to the other homes in the neighborhood, so. Have to figure out something about that gate, which I think they would like to have the almost opaque. We did pull the carport. Cover away from the existing garage to allow a little bit more natural light. I thought, I can't remember which. Commissioner brought that up, but we thought that was a good idea so that would. Look, you know, provide light between the two structures there. And next item on the list, which. We included our, the solar shade study, so. All those up, and as you know, we do. The. Four times during the year, the autumnal equinox, well, the equinoxes and. Solstices, so we have three times in each of those and the top. Series of diagrams here are the existing conditions and then the bottom row are the. What will be when the project's built. And I think we have them. One at nine in the morning, one at noon, one at three P M. So you can see that. In the afternoon, there's very little impact in the in the morning. I don't think we cast any shadow on the existing. I'm sorry, on the existing house to the left, so. Go to the next slide. Thank for all intents and purposes, the solar shade study turned out quite favorably. Shadows fall directly onto the client property. Slide. The red total of four slides for them. Obviously, the. The afternoon and both existing and the proposed are. Pretty benign and again on the far left where we have existing at top and then. Down below. Even there, there's very little shade on the neighboring property. Oh, sorry, thank you. So that's it for the the solar shade. Studies. Dick did reach out, as Phil mentioned, to. Most of the neighboring properties, if not all of the neighboring properties, and I think there were a total of. I think you said eleven, we actually have thirteen now. He did have correspondence with a gentleman who lives. Behind the home and had some questions. About privacy from his second story on to. The the new addition, I believe his name was George or Nick Georges. But Dick met with him this past weekend and they agreed to work something out primarily.
We got to get to a microphone if you're gonna speak, so.
We talked to the neighbor in the back, who's he's got a second story right now. He looks into our backyard. He wants privacy and we have ramp bamboo around. Both sides and we're gonna work on a mutual plant planting of. Brakes that, you know, separates our properties, so. He was pretty good with that today, I guess, last week, okay?
Well, we may come back and ask you some more questions about that, but we'll let Dan continue here and.
So. I think I covered. Most all the the issues that were raised, well, all the issues that were raised in in the last time that we met. And I think overall the general ethos with which we originally. Approach the design of this project with, anytime you do in addition to a. An old building that has character, it's always a challenge to pull that off in a sensitive way that's. You know, makes everyone happy, but I I think that the design. To the degree possible has met met that. That charge, so we feel that it's will be a successful project and. Be a good addition to the neighborhood.
Okay, so. Does Dick want to say anything or? Okay.
No, I I did. I reference that, yeah.
That's important. So. Okay, so that's what you've thrown at us now for a presentation and we can go to. Fourteen.
Yeah, oh, one other thing, Phil had asked me to go kind of. Canvas in the neighborhood and see other homes that were two story. And so I gave him a list. I don't know if you had any. Anything to add to that?
Yeah, I did. I provided photos of of the. The list that you gave me and and I think added to it as well. And so there are photos in your. In your staff report that show two story homes in the area. I don't have, I didn't get exact, you know, heights, many of them or a lot of them are originals, or we just didn't have building permit records on the heights, but. Gives you a sense of. Of the two story homes. I didn't take pictures of the single story homes, but just gives you a sense of the quite a. A number of them in the area that are two stories and probably close to thirty feet in height.
Yeah, well, we have looked at this a little bit previously, so those watching may wonder about that, but we did. Look at this application or before it was an application, we looked at the resident, so we have some familiarity with it. So. That said. If you have anything else you want to throw at us, please do, otherwise we'll. See if anybody has any questions for you directly right now and then we'll go to public comment. Mr. Rizzo, you're the griller.
Yeah, I can tell you there's quite a bit of houses in that in our neighborhood that are two, two stories, one of them, one of them being mine that is close thirty feet. Question regarding the. Wood shingles and wood siding, are you, what's, what is the material, the wood?
Most likely it'll be painted cedar siding. The, the. Existing front element with the gabled roof will be kept. That's shingle and then has a sticking element which we're going to maintain as well, so if you can go to the the front elevation there. And the sticking at the garage which matches it. One more, I think. Or did it disappear? It'd be there somewhere. There it is, yeah. So we were keeping, we. Essentially, the the front element is the same except the stairs and the windows are flipped. In the original design, it's on the left, the stairs are on the left and the windows on the right, but. We're gonna maintain and keep those windows and the sticking above in the gable. Help maintain the character of the home.
We're not in the wooey zone here where you're gonna need to use a composite of. Like a hardy shingle or anything like that.
Yeah, that's a good question. I haven't, I don't think. That's a good question. I don't know if this house is in the wooey zone. I don't know, on the top of my head, if it is. I know you can have wood siding, whether or not you can have shakes on top of, say, dense glass to. You know, hurdle the code that way, but if indeed it is in a wooey zone, that's probably the approach that we would have such that. We could use. Yeah.
Okay, and. I had a question regarding. The blue stone pavers, are they gonna be? Are you gonna have those as permeable pavers or non-permeable pavers? Are you gonna have any sand between them or?
Those are gonna be permeable, permeable. Can I say that permeable pavers? Yeah, we've worked with a civil engineer. Orion Agnew, who's very familiar with the area and. We worked extensively with him to. I think that's part of the planning package, actually. He provided documents for that, so the project meets. The permeability standards that the.
Noting that on the site plan, it has permeable pavers where there's the parking area, but on. The area above where there's blue stone, it's it's just called blue stone pavers.
I know we meet the code for sure, whether or not that entire back area itself is permeable. I don't know the extent of that off the top of my head.
And and are there any other? Landscaping mitigations for some of the runoff like a. Rain garden or something like that that could kind of take some of the sheet runoff?
I think if you go to the site. Plan, the colored site plan. There are. Not dry wells, but. Orion helped design or figured those out. Where the sheet drainage from the rear. Yard will, one. One more. Late, you can, there's a row of planners that extends horizontally. That there's a series of steps, it's a little. Challenging to see in this view, but that separates the, yeah, there you go. So those planners on both side of those steps will catch the flow. The sheet flow. Or that rear patio.
I got you.
And the the pavers for the driveway are permeable.
And I think I made a comment last last meeting about the doors and and maybe dividing the doors a little bit, that's. You guys didn't take that in consideration.
They're in the rear rear of the house and I think. We didn't look, to be honest, too closely at that after the last commission meeting, but we we feel. That those windows integrate with the house. And we wanted to provide an unbroken view to the to the to the rear yard from the main part of the house and the kitchen.
Thank you.
Okay, Margaret, did you have any questions for? Daniel.
Yeah, what was your thought thoughts process in making this? Monochromatic.
The home monochromatic?
Everything, yeah.
I don't know if I have a distinct answer, I think rather than calling out all the details of. A shingle home, sometimes it's nice just to have a monochromatic gray and it. We found that in past projects that are monochromatic tends to highlight the landscaping, particularly with the the gray color. It kind of helps the landscape pop against the background of that gray. But we didn't really look at schemes that were. Multicolored. I don't have a fabulous answer for you. I'll be honest.
Okay, and when you were here last time, you said you would need to consult. Someone about the window, the old window and how it. Could safely be moved to a new location. Did you do that?
We haven't spoken with the contractor specifically, but I think with care, we could save those windows.
Okay. Okay, and you didn't change the height at all either, did you?
We did not.
That's all I have.
Okay. Let me ask you another quick question. Are the other buildings gonna be painted the same color?
Uh, yeah, that's the idea, yeah, they're they're currently the same color, and so the idea would bring them all into the same vocabulary.
But the color, this is, is this the same color as existing buildings?
No.
No, so you're gonna paint all the other buildings the same colors?
Yes, what I meant to say was or convey was that. The existing buildings, all the existing buildings are the same color now, so.
Okay, great.
If that makes sense, yeah.
Okay, over to my right, Mr. Kane.
No questions.
Okay, then Dr. Bundy.
Really has taken a unique corner of their property and, you know, sort of preserved it, enhanced it and. Thanks for saving those windows. I think that's gonna be a nice touch in the house.
Yeah, after thinking about it, I think we we are in agreement. It's a nice touch, we can roll with that for sure.
Okay. All right, so here's where you can sit down and we'll open it up for public comment, see if there's anybody online that wants to say anything. They're still awake.
James, I don't see any raised hands.
Okay, before we move to our. Yes, I know, I was just going to say. That in lieu of that, no comment, we will take a call, a vote to extend the meeting to ten thirty. So this can be a voice vote. And if there's any nays. Go ahead, but. Let's all at once say yes or no.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we will extend to ten thirty, at which time if we need to, we need a affirmative roll call to go to eleven. So that said. Okay, no one wants to comment on this design application. Okay. All right. So. Now we can take it amongst ourselves and. Discuss this issue before us, so. Mr. Kane.
Yeah, I I think they've done a good job responding to our comments from the last meeting.
Yeah, I I think they've done a good job responding to our comments from the last meeting. And. Yeah, I think as Doctor Bundy said, I think it's gonna, you know, be a nice addition. It's nice to see these older homes brought back and. Given given a new life in a way. I guess I would be interested in how the planting relative to the neighbors concerned from behind gets. Resolved and enforced. But that made me more a question for staff than than anything else. No, that's it.
Okay, well, thank you. Doctor Bundy.
I love it. I can make all the findings.
Can you beat that?
I don't know if I can go that. I don't think I can go that fast. I also think it's a great composition and the buildings all work together. Like my only concern was kind of the runoff, but I think that that's been mitigated by some of the landscaping and. Permeable pavers. So I I can too make the findings. To to approve this project.
Okay, that's very good. Margaret, how do you feel about this?
Um, I'm, my concern is that monochromatic color. Over the entire property. With no break. And the only texture. Coming from the same color of everything. I like, it's not that I don't like the color. I like the color, but I do think that it needs to be. Broken up in some way. It's just. It it just really doesn't impress me as being anything that's going to show. The beauty of the building or how it. Stands out from anything else. It's just. I I don't think it really works in the context of of this home and. I still think it's too tall, but. Those are my comments.
Okay, all right. We're doing well here. I I agree, it's it is monochromatic. It's, I don't know whether you call it RH gray or what you call it. It's. It's a new style. It is what is happening. Kind of going on, and I I don't have an objection to it, but. You know, you did outreach to the neighbors and you came up with some consensus that the height and everything is okay. So that that's a. A big improvement that you succeeded in getting that. I don't think we need to memorialize. The screening at the back, if there's no one here to appeal or to object to it in any way, so that's between you and the neighbor. Whatever that is. You would put that into your application plan when it goes in. And if there's a problem with that material or whatever it is, it'll be objected to by the fire department. And if it's a, if it's eucalyptus, Bob will come help you plant. So, yeah, I I walked the neighborhood again. My biggest question was, how are you gonna get that stump out of there? I don't know. That's a major undertaking.
The USA.
I need a, you need a D nine to get that out of there.
I have a feeling. No shortage.
He's got some access.
Hold on, right, get it out of here. That'll take all of ten minutes, right? It may be the simplest thing, but. It's a couple of quick points. Did the neighbor to the west have any commentary about their tree and so forth?
You know, the trees.
Yeah.
Thought of the dirty things, the granddaughters running the house out. I know the trees.
Right. Yeah. Okay, well. Just curious, that's not something we can really talk about. So.
These storms, these windy storms.
Okay, I shouldn't be conducting this kind of interview from here, but nonetheless, it must be my lateness of the hour that making me delirious here. Anyway, I like it. It is gonna be a fabulous improvement to that side of Corredman Derr, so. I'm going to ask Doctor Bundy to make a motion here for this.
In the matter of the major design review application for a one thousand one hundred eighty-one square foot second. Level addition and modifications to the existing single-story home and lot at two oh six Baltimore Avenue file PL two-two dash oh oh seven one. I move to approve.
Second from somebody here.
Second.
Okay. All right, so let's roll it.
Commissioner Kenny?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Bundy?
Yes.
Chair Chase?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rizzo?
Yes.
Commissioner Bandell?
Yes.
Motion carries, five oh.
All right, well, thank you, guys. There are appeal rights to this.
There are appeal rights and appeal may be submitted in a decision by the planning commission and appeal. Must be made within ten calendar days. Appeal forms are available at the planning department for a fee of three hundred dollars.
All right. Your architect did a great job with this package. You know, it's a good thorough presentation. So that's, it's great to see that. Hopefully you had fun with this too. I don't know. Right, right now.
So we do have, we do have minutes from December thirteenth and January twenty-fourth to approve.
Yes. Anybody care to move to approve those minutes or make comment changes to those minutes?
I move to accept the minutes.
Voice vote.
On favor.
Okay. With that said. I really want to. Hey, thank you, Bob.
Thank all of you.
You're gonna miss us.
I am, I am. I'm gonna be sitting around on. Wait a minute, something's wrong here.
He's gonna be zooming, he's gonna be zooming in, I know. So, Mister Kane.
We do have two council reports.
Please feel free, feel free to proceed.
Okay.
Just before, I just want to. Tell everybody that I don't be here for the next. Meeting. But I'm going to be doing the town council. Report. On the twenty-first, which I can do, but I just won't be here to give the report. On that next meeting.
Okay.
So it'll have to be postponed over.
And I'll also add that the next meeting will not include one oh six walnut. That was an error on my part. So next meeting will only, at this point, just has one item, so that's February twenty-eighth, and that will be our house. Retail store at the town center will be the the one real item at this point. Not one oh six walnut, one oh six walnut will come the first meeting in March. Yes.
Okay, Mister Kenny.
So. Council meeting on. December twentieth. The major item was a report by Parks and Rec, their annual report and their report on. Their plan for twenty twenty-three. And I think it'll. Doesn't necessarily affect us, but the one thing they're discussing is whether they need to charge. For fees for. Services and and activities to cover all of their expenses or not. In the town council meeting. On February seventh. I got unlucky and I got the audit report. Very stimulating, but I I think the most interesting thing for us was that. The council approved changing the name of the. The. Department from. Planning and and building to development department and community development. And community development department. So we're gonna have a new name. Well, staff will have a new name, but we're gonna be the commissioners to a new name. I don't know, when does that take effect?
Back to the council the next meeting for the second reading and then they're. Think thirty days later it'll take effect.
What's his name again?
Community Development Department.
Community Development Department.
And also they're gonna be looking for a. There'll be a search for an employee to be the community development director.
Okay. Throw in the gates open, okay. All right, so conclude your reporting?
Yes, it does.
Okay. I watched the January eleventh meeting. Of the town council, which included the public hearing on the. Housing element, adoption and so forth, first pass of that, right? It's getting to be old history now. It's just, it's really. Kind of like stale news. And the subsequently was approved by the town in a follow-up hearing, right? But. There's been so much news about this. I don't know, Martha, if you want to update sort of where this all stands, I think that would be more pertinent.
And so the town council adopted the rezonings for the ten housing opportunity sites along with certifying the environmental impact report. And adopting the general plan land use element update. And then we did this last week, up posted a revised draft housing element to the website. And we're required to have it posted for seven days before we resubmit to HCD. And they'll have sixty days for their second review, so we anticipate submitting end of this week or early next week. And then we likely will return to the commission and the council with the updates to the housing element and safety element in April, May timeframe. So that'll, that'll be the end.
You know, today on NPR, I was listening to a report. And they were talking about the housing element, what's going on in the state, and apparently in Marin County, Belvidere and Nevada, I. They went through all the places that have not. Turned in their plan on time or. Were rejected and not done what they needed to do or were late in turning in, but Belvidere and Nevada were the two in Marin County. There's a whole list of them and they're. The groups that are pro-housing element or whatever they are are planning on suing. The the towns that. Are late.
Yeah, there's been quite a few lawsuits. I think there's three in Marin County. I believe. Yeah, I'm blanking on the third one and may may know off the top of her head.
I, you know, I I can't remember the third one. I know that Belvidere and Nevada have already been sued.
Yeah, I think it may be Fairfax.
It wasn't.
Yes.
Cause they're incomplete.
And then, yeah, out of the, I think, hundred and six Bay Area cities, there's only a couple that have actually had a certified housing element by HCD. But many have kind of self-certified their housing elements prior to HCD certifying.
But I was driving in the car, but I managed to pat ourselves on the back because we were not that. That's right. Yes.
Martha over there, right?
Absolutely.
So as I understand it, the suits were by Yes in My Backyard to use the builder's remedy? Is that what's going on?
The, I I can't talk too much about it, of course, because it is in litigation with another client. But they are trying to get the court to declare that the buildings, builder's remedy now applies because the cities don't have. A compliant housing element. That's not. Accurate, but that's what they're saying.
Okay, people don't understand what that is, and I get asked all the time, so. And I need a schooling, right? Thank you.
There is an A bag cheat sheet.
Long lunch, I need a cheat sheet. Yeah, I just say they, nobody's listening, right? There's nobody on line anymore, right? So, but they just, they screwed up. And we didn't, so that's really great. So, okay, well, that said, we've covered everything.
I've got a January seventeenth. I'll be brief.
Okay, yes.
So that's when we were. Appointed Bob's. Replacement, and I think Valerie's gonna do a great job. She's got a. And and Bob will be sit, be very happy that she's got a big background in sustainability. And with all the big projects coming up, I think that should be a good addition to our. To our commission. Also, there there's a new software that's coming into play. It's called a public transparency portal in which anybody from the public can take a look and see how we're spending our money and our budget. And it's got several tools where you can tweak the views and. So that's what's something new coming up. And sent calendar was all passed and. And there's some budget budget information, everything, everything went through. No problem, and the last thing was. Talked about. The funding, the three million dollars and funding for. That we put aside to. Assist in the overpass. On one oh one. So that was the big, the big ticket item that council had passed. So that we can get a more attractive and functional overpass. Incorporate some of the, some of the things that we want to see with the. Bike lane and all sorts of other things. So council thought that that was a good, a good thing to put that money forward so that we could. Try to get in the front of the line with Caltrans funding. And then there were some other reports about some other grants that could be available. For a regional pathway project. So.
Did they say what the next step was for the overpass?
Yes, I mean, the next step was, they were gonna, and Martha, you could. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that we 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 had to reapply and, you know, stating that we would go ahead and put up three million dollars in our our money. To try to get the grant money that that was available, and I think there's only so much for each town, so you kind of. We're trying to get on the top of the pecking order so that so that we get our job. Completed before the funding drives up on. I think, was it twenty twenty-six? Martha, do you recall? I don't remember.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Anyway, there's a, there's a window.
Yeah, okay.
But I'm glad that we put our best foot forward to try to get that funding because it's a very important pass. I think we all use it every day multiple times.
Right, no, that's great. All right. That's it.
That's it, that's all for me, thank you.
Okay. Move to adjourn.